Then we will convene in open session, then we have public service announcements. We have a public hearing for new liquor license, Zykor Entertainment. Then a public hearing, which is kind of debatable, for liquor license for Lucky Mat. Robert Briere is in to discuss the old burial grounds, vote to accept the resignation of Lieutenant Maxoloyo, vote to support amounts for special town meeting warrant article 34, vote to support amount for special town meeting warrant article 49, vote to amend amount for special town meeting warrant article 40, discussion on transferring funds from the reserve fund for consultant to assist the TA search, vote on warrant article regarding town administrator's salary, article 36, department head updates, DPW, water and sewer, and council on aging, vote to accept a donation to the memory cafe, town administrators update, old business, new business, correspondence approval of minutes, citizens forum, and then we will adjourn. Mary, do you have the...
I do. I make a motion pursuant to Mass General Lodge, Chapter 30A, Section 21A4, to discuss public safety concerns, and Mass General Lodge, Chapter 30A, Section 21A2, to discuss union bargaining matters, where the Chair of the Board of Selectmen declares that discussion in an open session would have a detrimental effect on the position of the town and the approval of executive minutes.
Okay, and I so declare. Is there a second?
Second.
Priscilla, how do you vote?
Yes.
Chase?
Yes.
Yes.
And I vote yes.
Okay, Michelle.
Moving?
Yeah.
Okay. I have a clarification, if you want to come back. You're asking me voting 34, 35, and 36. I think we only have 34 there, but it's also 35 and 36.
36.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
49, 40.
Yeah, I noticed that this morning.
No problem.
That's town administrator, either the salary and the consultant.
Well...
If you so desire. Or you're stuck with me forever. That's your two choices.
Okay. Let's go. Okay. Let's see. It's my agenda, probably.
Usually we have a question that we're overriding.
You know, it's nice to be ahead of time.
Okay.
Okay, so why don't we... Well, we can't go to Robert Briere, he's not here.
Can we do our announcement?
Yeah.
We aren't good?
Oh, no.
Yeah, we could do.
Okay. We could stand for the pledge, we didn't do that, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, public service announcements. Priscilla?
Nope.
Chase?
Nope.
Mike?
No.
Mary?
I have one. I just want to thank everybody that volunteered for the town table at the Harvest Fest, and in particular, call out to, a shout out to Kevin Filczak, who manned the table both Saturday and Sunday from beginning, from morning till close. We had a few people come by, we had a few people that will be moving to Sturbridge, so that was good.
That was interesting to hear.
Quite a few people took the trails map, so just thanks to all the volunteers.
Okay. On November 13th at 10:00 AM, Principal Assessant Ann Murphy will be speaking at the senior center about a tax exemption for residents of Sturbridge. Also, the special town meeting is October 29th, 7:00 at Tantasca. We don't have a meeting beforehand, so I figured I'd remind people now. Also, trick or treating, even though we haven't gotten the official announcement, it always has been October 31st, 5 to 7, and then the Horribles Parade following, starting outside of the Town Hall. Okay, I just got to send this off, just in case the plane goes down.
Have you asked what a Horribles Parade is?
Oh, the costumes, the fire department and the Lions Club have hot chocolate.
For children?
Well, any age.
Ted, at our interim, you can enter.
They have it.
They have it 15 and over category. Mary has this idea that she wanted the whole board to get into it one time.
Yeah. You know what, and we're a really friendly board, it'd be nice, we could be like a six-pack of microbrewery beer.
Five-packs.
A five-pack. No, you can do it too. I don't even drink beer, but I think it would be fun.
It's not in my contract.
Not in your contract? Ted, I'm with you. I'm with you.
Today, we're going to put you in charge.
Free only go so far.
Yeah, I know.
Young and...
I already have my Halloween costume.
Yeah, I don't do costumes.
Tooth Fairy.
Oh, that's nice.
Never seen the Tooth Fairy.
I made a crown and a toothbrushes.
Oh, wow, oh clever.
I have the same witches costume that I had since Matthew was like three. Matthew goes, "Mom, change it up a little." I go, "You know, it works, I pull it out once a year." Whatever.
So can we nominate Mary to be the representative at the Horribles Parade?
At the Horribles Parade?
I'm definitely going.
Yeah, no, I usually go, I just, costumes I just don't do. I'm lucky I wear green on St. Patrick's Day, put it that way. Okay, so we're early for the public hearings, so let's, we can skip a few things and...
Why don't we, may I suggest, can we let these folks go first and get them, let them get out?
Oh, I didn't see Greg come in.
I'm just thinking, why keep them if they don't have to stay? I mean, you guys...
That's true. Would you guys like to get...
Unless you want to stay.
I see a couple of smiles.
Would you guys like to get out of here quickly? Okay, Greg, you're up first then.
Remember who did this for you?
I... Got it locked in.
You had to finish by 6:35.
Okay, good evening.
Good evening. September and August and September, basically, were kind of tailing down on the construction season. We had some pavement work to do, and September is the annual time of year that we inspect all of, have a, our stickers are all due, pretty much all due, so townwide, so we had to get through that. And the only thing for me, the biggest thing for me is the plow bids. They came in, we were really one route short, but subsequently, we had a late, on the spare list, we had a late submittal, and there's another one coming possibly this week, so I'd like to get those approved.
Okay, does everybody have the list there? Somebody willing to make a motion?
Some moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor? Okay, 5 to nothing.
In our, on the other side of it, we, we're going to get our, start to get our materials in this week for sand and salt, so it's that time of year, you know? And on the other end of it, we were kind of phasing out of the construction part and doing the fall cleanup for leaves, and there's quite a bit of work on that, cemeteries and ball fields and all that stuff, so there's a lot going on, as the weather hasn't really cooperated either, but it's, we're still busy.
Well, that's good.
Yep.
Okay, any questions from the board? I have one, Greg, but maybe more for Shane. The, I assume it was the water department raised, well, they didn't raise, they lifted the sewer on Faqua, the manhole covers.
Oh, if they were, if they were starting to fall in, they probably did, we probably did.
Oh, well, somebody did, but one of them is kind of loose now, so that when the cars going down the road...
It rattles.
They hit it, and it rattles.
Where was that one?
It's between 24 and my house, 26. Took me a while to figure out which one was.
Sometimes you can just spin them, it's just the way they're seated.
Yeah.
So we'll take a look at that.
Because I know there's another one across from me that it...
No, that was us, we're checking the drains.
Yeah.
To, you know, pre, pre-paving type of thing, so that was definitely us.
Yeah, so just, it's just, with the windows closed, it's not bad, but it's still been open.
They won't be open for a while.
No. Okay, anything else for Greg? Okay, Shane?
Have a good night, Greg.
Yeah, thank you.
Well, Shane, I'm sorry to introduce myself, I haven't met you yet, but...
I can't say hello.
Have you come up before?
She hasn't met you.
Oh, well, it's happened to get old. Sorry. I tried to get your attention. I know I've talked to you a couple times.
Is this new?
A little.
Looks good. Okay.
I turned in the monthly reports for August and September. September, I didn't get to you till today because I didn't have everything together, so if there's any questions, I'll start with those.
Okay, any questions on the report from... Okay, I didn't read it as thoroughly because we just got it, but...
Yeah, and in there, I included the update on all the pilot work that we've done, so if you have any questions on that, you can call me, email me, stop by.
Okay, how's everything going?
Good, plants are running well, obviously, there's plenty of water. We're getting ready to start flushing hydrants, and winterizing the hydrants, right out, we flush them. We did a leak audit, which is required by a water permit, we brought in a outside contractor, and they sent out a couple different crews, and they used listening devices and correlators, and the only leak they found was a leaking fire hydrant, which I think has a bad seat. The hydrant's from 1960, so we'll probably replace it before winter, but besides that, the water system's pretty tight, which, you know, I really didn't expect to find anything different. The other thing, we had the sanitary survey for the water system from the Mass DEP, they've been here for two days, she has to come back one more time, and then they'll send us a report, really, nothing really outstanding. I think their biggest thing is, they want to know when we're going to replace the Pusa Station up on Fisk Hill, and I just explained that we were waiting to see what was going on in the Gilpin before we move forward.
Okay, let's see. That was my agenda, probably. You know, it's nice to be ahead of time. Okay, so why don't we, um... Well, we can't go to Barbier, he's not here.
Can we do our announcement?
Yeah.
We are in good?
Oh, no.
Yeah, we could do.
Okay. We could stand for the pledge. We didn't do that, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, public service announcements. Priscilla?
Nope.
Chase?
Nope.
Mike?
No.
Mary?
I have one. I just want to thank everybody that volunteered for the town table at the Harvest Fest. And in particular, call out to, a shout out to Kevin Filczak, who manned the table both Saturday and Sunday from beginning, from morning till close. We had a few people come by. We had a few people that will be moving to Sturbridge, so that was good.
That was interesting to hear.
Quite a few people took the trails map, so just thanks to all the volunteers.
Okay. Um, on November 13th at 10:00 a.m., Principal Assessant Ann Murphy will be speaking at the senior center about a tax exemption for residents of Sturbridge. Also, the special town meeting is October 29th, 7:00 o'clock at Tantasqua. We don't have a meeting beforehand, so I figured I'd remind people now. Also, trick or treating, even though we haven't gotten the official announcement, it always has been October 31st, 5 to 7:00, and then the Horribles Parade following, starting outside of the town hall. Okay. I just gotta send this off, just in case the plane goes down.
Have you asked what a Horribles Parade is?
Oh, the costumes. The, um, fire department and the Lions Club have hot chocolate.
For children?
Well, any age.
Anybody?
Ted, they have it.
At our interim, you can enter.
They have it 15 and over category.
Mary has this idea that she wanted the whole board to get into it one time.
Yeah.
I know, I have. You know what? And we're a really friendly board. It would be nice, we could be like a six-pack of microbrewery beer.
Five-packs.
A five-pack. No, you can do it too. I don't even drink beer, but I think it would be fun.
It's not in my contract.
Not in your contract?
Ted, I'm with you. I'm with you.
Janay, we're gonna put you in charge.
Free only go so far.
Yeah, I know.
Young and...
I already have my Halloween costume.
Yeah, I don't do costumes.
Tooth Fairy.
Oh, that's nice. Never seen the Tooth Fairy.
I made a crown and a toothbrushes.
Oh, wow. How clever.
I have the same witches costume that I had since Matthew was like three. Matthew goes, "Mom, change it up a little." I go, "You know, it works." I pull it out once a year. Whatever.
So can we nominate Mary to be the representative at the?
At the Horrible Parade?
Well, I'm definitely going.
Yeah, no, I usually go. I just, costumes, I just don't do. I'm lucky I wear green on St. Patrick's Day. Put it that way. Okay, so we're early for the public hearings, so let's, we can skip a few things and...
Why don't we, may I make a suggestion? Can we let these folks go first and get them, let them get out?
Oh, I didn't see Greg come in.
I'm just thinking, why keep them if they don't have to stay? I mean, you guys...
That's true. Would you guys like to get?
I see a couple of smiles.
Would you guys like to get out of here quickly? Okay, Greg, you're up first then.
Remember who did this for you?
You had to finish by 6:35.
Okay, good evening.
Good evening. September and August and September, basically, were kind of tailing down on the construction season. We had some pavement work to do. September is the annual time of year that we inspect all of, have a... Our stickers are all due, pretty much all due, so townwide, so we had to get through that. And the only thing for me, the biggest thing for me is the plow bids. They came in, we were really one route short, but subsequently, we had a late... On the spare list, we had a late submittal, and there's another one coming possibly this week, so I'd like to get those approved.
Okay, does everybody have the list there? Somebody willing to make a motion?
Some moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor? Okay, 5 to 0.
In our, uh, on the other side of it, we, we're gonna get our, start to get our materials in this week for sand and salt, so it's that time of year, you know? And on the other end of it, we were kind of phasing out of the construction part and doing the fall cleanup for leaves and there's quite a bit of work on that, cemeteries and ball fields and all that stuff, so there's a lot going on. The weather hasn't really cooperated either, but it's, we're still busy.
Well, that's good.
Yep.
Okay, any questions from the board? I have one, Greg, but maybe more for Shane. The, I assume it was the water department raised, well, they didn't raise, they lifted the sewer on Faqua, the manhole covers.
Uh, if they were, if they were starting to fall in, they probably did. We probably did.
Oh, well, somebody did, but one of them is kind of loose now, so that when the cars going down the road...
It rattles?
They hit it and it rattles.
Where was that one?
Um, it's between 24 and my house, 26. Took me a while to figure out which one was.
Sometimes you can just spin them.
It's just the way they're seated.
Yeah, yeah.
So we'll take a look at that.
Because I know there's another one across from me that it...
No, that was us. We're checking the drains.
Yeah.
To, you know, pre, pre-paving type of thing, so that was definitely us.
Yeah, so just, it's just with the windows closed, it's not bad, but it's still been open.
They won't be open for a while.
No. Okay, anything else for Greg? Okay, Shane? Thank you, Greg.
Yeah, thank you.
Well, Shane, I'm sorry to introduce myself. I haven't met you yet, but... Have you come up before? Oh, well, that's happened to get old. Sorry. I tried to get your attention. I know I've talked to you a couple of times.
Is this new?
A little.
Looks good. Okay.
I turned in the monthly reports for August and September. September, I didn't get to you till today because I didn't have everything together. So if there's any questions, I'll start with those.
Okay, any questions on the report from... Okay, you didn't read it as thoroughly because we just got it, but...
Yeah, and in there, I included the update on all the pilot work that we've done. So if you have any questions on that, you can call me, email me, stop by.
Okay, how's everything going?
Good. Plants are running well. Obviously, there's plenty of water. We're getting ready to start flushing hydrants. In winterizing the hydrants, right after we flush them. We did a leak audit, which is required by a water permit. We brought in a outside contractor, and they sent out a couple of different crews. And they used listening devices and correlators, and the only leak they found was a leaking fire hydrant, which I think has a bad seat. The hydrant's from 1960, so we'll probably replace it before winter. But besides that, the water system's pretty tight, which, you know, I really didn't expect to find anything different. The other thing, we had the sanitary survey for the water system from the Mass D E P. They've been here for two days. She has to come back one more time, and then they'll send us a report. Really, nothing really outstanding. I think their biggest thing is they want to know when we're gonna replace the Pusa Station up on Fisk Hill. And I just explained that we were waiting to see what was going on in the Gilpin before we move forward, so... But that station's running fine. I took them up there. It's got a brand-new residential pump, brand-new motor on the fire pump, so it's running fine. They were happy with it. Besides that, I really don't expect anything else to come out of that survey.
Well, that's good.
It looks like the sink's all set now. I mean, we're in compliance another month?
We're in compliance. We're walking, we're walking the line, but we're in compliance. That's all I have for you this evening.
Okay, anything else from the board?
I see, I see you have a meeting scheduled for the 18th of October for...
Yeah, so what we did was we brought in Avoca, owns BioMag and Comag. I reached out to their Comag expert, just asked them to come in, take a look at the way we're running things, and make sure, you know, optimizing the best we can, which they did. And at that time, they proposed running another pilot, so I run it through Viola's technical people. I have to have a meeting with Greg and our people on Thursday, and then we'll decide which way we're gonna move with the pilot.
The purpose of the pilot is to reduce the...
Correct.
When I get any removal call back.
Yeah. It should be.
Would be nice if it is. We gotta wait if we did. Seventy percent of the removals up top with BioMag. And it's going out of the plan at, you know, 70% or 71%, which is, there's just no...
It's not the system's not functioning the way it's supposed to, which is this is a new patent that they have going, so I really can't speak too much about it, but they think it has the potential to remove it up to 100%, but until it hap, until it happens, that's when I'll believe it.
Okay, anything else? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we still have time. We can, um...
Want me to do correspondence?
Well, that's kind of...
Long.
Long. We had a few letters of resignation and stuff.
Oh, yeah, it is a bit longer.
Yeah, yeah, it is. Whatever I did, you forgot. Okay, um, there's a letter from Lieutenant Soloyo submitting his resignation. He's going to be police chief in Tisbury. So we wish him well. Is there someone willing to make a motion to accept the resignation?
Some moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Okay. I wonder what would've happened if we said no?
Sorry, who seconded?
Oh, Mike did. Okay, let's...
No involuntary servitude. It doesn't really matter, right, if we accept it or not?
Yeah, it's just all formality. Okay, we've got a couple of minutes still. I don't think... Do we have anything that's only a minute? Ted, do you have something that's only a minute?
About the gift, the donation?
Yeah, there you go. That'll be quick.
Memorial gift.
Okay. Where's the gift from?
Doesn't say, doesn't.
Should be, is it there?
Been redacted.
We have, um...
It's a $100 donation to the Memory Cafe at the...
It's like been redacted.
Probably.
Anonymous.
I think it might be anonymous.
Yeah, well, we can still accept it. Is there a motion to accept it?
Some moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All in favor? Okay.
Took almost a minute.
It will be now.
Yeah. Of course, this is the one that we have listed. Oh, we do, sorry, I was looking at the wrong one. This, "Public hearing for a new liquor license" from Viacor Entertainment Second LLC slash Cinemagic. Is there anyone here from there? Could you come down, please? Could you sign in first? Okay, now you can sit at one of the mics. The mics are actually for the audience at home. The TV picks it up. We usually can hear pretty well here. I know you have a photocopy of all the certified mailings. Oh, yes, sorry, Mary.
No problem. In accordance with chapter 138, the Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing on Monday, October 15, 2018, at 6:35 p.m. regarding the application of a wine and malt liquor license filed by Zia Corp. doing business as Cinemagic Movie Theater. This hearing will be held at Veterans Memorial Hall, Sturbridge Town Hall, 308 Main Street, Sturbridge, and it's dated September 27, 2018.
Okay, you have a copy of the green cards. Do you have the actual green cards with you?
I did, and I have all of them.
Okay, thank you. Of course, I do notice they do want a signature and printed names. And out of nine people, three of them followed directions. Well, signatures are tough. Okay, could you please explain what it is you would like to do?
I'm just the general manager over at Cinemagic. My boss is from New Hampshire, told me to come to this meeting. They were just looking to get a liquor license for the theater to sell beer, wine, and I believe a sangria machine as well.
Now, where do you anticipate selling this?
In the concessions. I know they were looking to just get a fridge for the beer and the wine, and then the sangria would be just like the icy machines that we have just behind the concessions for the employees to sell.
And what security would you be providing?
Check it. I know in the system itself, we, other locations do have liquor licenses, so they punch in the birth, date of birth from the license onto the system. There is a failsafe in that where you have to enter that in. And I know they were looking to lock up the liquor so that only 18-plus could serve for the employees.
Are any of the employees tip-certified?
I don't believe so, no.
Questions from other members? Priscilla?
Yeah, I have quite a bit of concern on this. You have a lot of families and a lot of children...
Right.
...who go. What if you have, how well-trained are, is your staff? It's not tip-certified is number one concern, but how well-trained are they that if they're a high school student working behind the concessions and their friend comes up, how do you know that that friend is not going to serve the other friend liquor? How do you know that?
Just asking for ID, making sure that they're not serving. And I know my boss had also mentioned getting bracelets for who is being served in special cups.
No, I do have a lot of concern too. It is a family venue.
Right.
Yeah.
And is, careful as people can be. Kids are not always careful. Adults are not always careful. There would be nothing from preventing my husband and I to both buy a beer and go in, sit down. I don't drink beer. I could hand it off to somebody else. I just don't think there's enough security for that type of venue to have a liquor license. Priscilla?
I think if you had a bigger, personally, just, just me, if you had a bigger lobby where you can separate this...
Yeah.
...and put it on the side with tables and whatever, and you can secure it in a certain way, would be more palatable for me. But to put it in with concessions with Coke and popcorn and all that, doesn't fly for me because it is a family.
We do have the back counters where we keep everything, and we have fridges that are locked up so that people aren't just grabbing them.
I'm not worried about the people grabbing it. I'm worried about the 14- and 15-year-old that may have access to it and then get in a car and who knows what's gonna happen. That's my concern.
Mary?
I don't disagree with what's been said, but were you proposing that they get it, the beer and wine at the concessions and then take it into the movie theater with them? Or would they have to drink it in a bar area outside of...
I'm not quite sure. They didn't really inform me on much of anything just to come to the meeting, so...
Yeah, because, yeah, I mean, because that's another thing. As they said, if it was, if it was separated into a bar area, but... You know, I know you have to give your tickets when you go in, and then you're not allowed to take the beer into the, into the movie theaters. But a group of people, one person can be of age and the friends aren't, and who's up and down the aisles to make sure you're just not handing the beer off to a friend?
Yeah, so I don't know if that's what they intended.
No, I know, you're just, you're just here. And as far as being tip-certified, we do always ask that question of restaurants, every, everyone.
Anyone that pours.
Everyone, anyone that pours. And the other thing would be, do you always have a general manager on duty that is older, that is of drinking age, 21 and older?
Yeah, I'm the general manager. I'm 22, and then I also have my, we're actually in the middle of hiring a new assistant manager, but the one that is on is in his 30s.
And their, a general manager is always there?
Not always. About 45 hours a week they are, and then we occasionally have the supervisors on as well.
Okay, and is the supervisor, is, is there somebody there that's always of drinking age or older?
Not of drinking age. I know all our supervisors are at least 18.
18, okay.
Chase?
Yeah, I have some concerns about this, and I was just wondering, you said some other locations years have this policy where they can serve alcohol there. How's the experience in the theater? I mean, usually when people drink, they get a little louder. I didn't know if there was issues inside those theaters or...
I'm not sure. They're, they're on New Hampshire locations, so I've never actually experienced the liquor portion of that.
Yeah, okay.
Mike, any questions?
Yeah, well, I, you know, I do have a question about, you know, tip certification. I mean, we're going through this lengthy application. I don't see anybody in here that has not one to certificate, which we usually get.
Right.
Of course, the manager applying for a license like this would also have to be certified. So I think, you know, I'm not saying that it's, you know, impossible to do this, but I think we should continue the hearing or either withdraw and then come back again with it at a later date because I don't think we have the information we need to make a decision on this, right, you know, as of right tonight.
Well, the information we do have would help me make a decision that I would not approve it. I think it's very loose having it at a concession, and the intent of selling concessions is to take them into the theater and enjoy them, so... And I don't think there'd be any controls in the eight theaters to see. You do have that little game room. Now, if that game room didn't have the videos, which kids love though, you know, and you changed that into a bar and drinking only there and not going in, but the way the application is now, I would not vote in favor.
This is a trend throughout the country, but usually it would be for a showing for a 21-and-over crowd, so you wouldn't allow anybody under 21 in the theater that was, that had alcohol being served. But it is a trend across the country and...
Yeah. I think other locations have done something similar where there were certain nights where it was only 21-plus.
But because this is a family venue, I, you know, we're all concerned that we don't want, you know, adults mixing alcohol with children.
Okay, so maybe limited, so, and I also, when you, if you come back tip-certified and separated... Because I know if you go see a, if you, most playhouses, if you go see a play, at intermission, you can have beer and wine, but you're not allowed to take it into the theater. So I don't, I don't know how that would work out. But also, I would ask of your other locations, have there ever been violations where you have served to underage drinkers at the other Cinemagic locations? And I'm sure that's not information that you would have...
Right.
You know, ready knowledge of, but it would, would be a question that I would ask just as, to see as a litmus as to how effective Cinemagic is in keeping only of-age drinkers, so...
Yeah, there needs to be a lot tightened up. Would you be amenable to withdrawing the application without prejudice and bringing all our concerns back to corporate and seeing where they want to go from there?
I know my boss is coming down to the town hall tomorrow, so I don't know if that's what he's coming for. Like I said, he had only told me to come here, so I don't know what the whole plan was.
Well, I mean... If it was anything, yeah.
It's, it's either that or we'll take a vote on the application tonight, and I'm sure you know how it's gonna go.
Right. I would, I think that's all he wanted was for me to hear the vote and then just bring all the information back to home office.
Okay, somebody want to make a motion?
Then I'll make a motion that we not approve.
Close the hearing.
Oh, excuse me, wait a minute. It is a public hearing, I forget. Anyone in the public have any comment? Is there a motion to close?
Some moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of closing the public hearing? 5 to 0, Janay. Okay, Priscilla?
I make a motion to not approve a liquor license for Zicor Entertainment, known as Cinemagic.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Bless you. All in favor of the motion? Okay, 5 to 0. Okay, so you've got all...
Excuse me, can I make a suggestion? You might want, to, to, we'll get in trouble. Have your boss call me.
Okay.
Have called town administrator's office and ask for a town administrator. My name's Mr. Kozak, K-O-Z-A-K.
Right, because it's nothing personal with your presentation tonight.
You did a great, you did a great job, but it's not your fault.
But one, one thing we usually get with an application like this also is a, some kind of memo or statement or recommendation from the police chief, and we don't have that.
Yeah, we don't always, though.
Not always, but...
Sometimes he does, sometimes he doesn't because it's strictly a license that we give, but we also usually...
For something like this, I would...
We usually get a sketch of where it's gonna be served to, yeah. You know, and that's a major concern, so maybe if you could convince him to put it in the game room and not bring it into the theater, you know, that would be a whole different ballgame.
Right.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for coming in. Have a good night. Okay. Now, we do have another public hearing listed for seven, but, well, Janay just did that, but we don't really need a public hearing. We had a public hearing on this license and approved it.
Right.
And the stipulation was we would have to apply for special legislation.
There's a hearing.
Okay. Lucky Matt? Okay, would you like to come down, please? We know it's not seven, but we were just discussing that point that we don't really feel we need a public hearing because we had a public hearing on the license before and approved it, but it had to go to the state for special legislation, and we did take it to town meeting, and they voted for it to go to the state. And however, there was a typo in the chapter. And we just learned that. We got the letter that the governor signed it and everything, but then we got a thing from council saying that there was, instead of chapter 138, they put chapter 18 or something. So all that we really need to do now is to just write a letter to the governor, and that can be handled quickly, so we don't really need another public hearing.
I would request one for tonight's hearing just because there is still the opportunity for the public to attend and...
They've already done that.
...express their opinion.
They've already done that.
They've already done that.
Public has already done that.
But they can do it again tonight.
Yeah, but if we don't need it, we've had it. I mean, it's redundant.
I understand it's redundant, but I don't want to risk a neighbor or someone objecting to it.
Too late now. It's too late. They've already had that hearing, and it went to a town meeting, and it's all been approved.
I understand that, that the towns approved special legislation.
Yes.
Right.
Even the, even the legislation act says in a court with chapter 138, Even the, even the legislation act says in a court with chapter 138, chapter 138 does require a public hearing, I mean...
Have you notified a butters?
Uh, I was, I was told the town would...
Yep.
Is that the list you gave us?
Yeah.
Yeah, we just set it up as a, we didn't know there was an issue about, we didn't know there was a matter of hearing.
They didn't realize that we already had had the public hearing. Um, wisdom, our council, our council, he would recommend that the board of selectmen vote to ask the governor to fi, file language that would fix the erroneous statutory reference in chapter 246 of the Acts of 2018, per the draft language provided by legislative staff. The board's vote would specifically refer to the draft language provided by legislative staff. The board's motion could state as follow, follows, "I move that the board of selectmen request that the governor file legislation on behalf of the town to correct a legislative drafting error in chapter 246 of the Acts of 2018, as shown in the attached draft wording for the corrective action." And he does say ordinarily, when you ask for special legislation, it needs town meeting vote, but we've already had that, and this is under a governor's bill, which is, it doesn't require that.
Does that hold them up though? I mean, since it's an, a chapter, I mean, it's a typo, correct? Does that hold them up from proceeding, since the governor has in ta, in essence approved it?
It, it would for them having the permission to go forward, you're correct. We just got this Thursday or Friday, and I was gonna bring it up in my report, uh, which I thought, I didn't realize it's the same, the, the issue that I got from the, um, town council had to do with them. So I, I believe he's saying that you're, to be safe, you wanted to have a public hearing once it was approved.
Right, so I'm, I'm confused what the typo, what typo...
So now, you, you may not, you may not be aware.
Might be talking about two different things.
No, that, um, yeah, the, um...
Three different things, actually.
It, the typo, it, it was written notwithstanding section 17 of chapter 18 of the general laws, where it should have said, notwithstanding section 17 of chapter 138 of the general laws.
Now, now, we just learned, we just learned that, so...
Yeah.
So that there could be, so if you, let's assume you had your public hearing tonight, and you were right that we needed to have this public hearing? It may be voided anyways because of this issue.
Right.
So perhaps it's either reschedule or continue till we find out, so, you know.
Because you want to have, you, if I understand correctly, want to have your public hearing, I think after the typo is corrected.
He wanted, they wanted it after it passed.
Yes, but he didn't realize that there's another step.
Exactly.
Because there's a, a typo on what legislation was referenced.
Unfortunately...
Why did you, why did you want to have a public hearing?
Because chapter 138 requires a public hearing, even though the, the state and the town already granted you a special one, additional license.
We didn't do that for...
Back in February, and it was signed into law.
We didn't do that for Ocean State.
No, but he's saying that it was required at the end.
At the end, yeah.
And at the end of the process.
All the ones we've issued.
So that we can sign the license, we don't have to have a hearing before we ever...
It may be, true, I just, I don't know the...
All, all I'm saying, we wait 10 minutes for, if someone wanted to show up today, if there was...
Yeah, but, but what he, but, but, excuse me, I...
No.
But what the town administrator just said is that it would be avoided anyway.
It may, I'm not an expert on this, but it could very well be, because of this issue, which she did not know about.
Yeah.
But who is, who, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm married to this question.
Oh, that's okay.
Um, who were you speaking with in regards to the typo and how to, how to...
Um, well, we first heard about it from Senator Goby's office, one of her aides, and then we passed it on to our town council, and he gave us, you know, the advice that we really only needed to write a letter to the governor, so it would be a governor's bill, and that would just pass quickly.
It's still a governor's bill.
Okay, I, I request we just do a public hearing tonight.
Well, that's fine.
And then, and then we can say, you can approve, you can approve on the condition that the typo was cleared up.
Yep, no, that's...
Yeah.
I don't know, I'm tripping back.
That's fine.
That way we're covering all bases, if, you know.
Well, sit in the back for the millions of people that will be showing up.
See you in five minutes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll wait a couple minutes and...
Yes. Okay, did, Bob, were you, no?
In the event...
Let's see, okay. Now, Heather, you're going to take a little while, so...
Maybe we can approve the water department's capital cost. Article 49 would be...
Well, we have the, we're gonna have to open up the warrant and then close it, so why don't you do correspondence?
All right. Correspondence for October 15th, 2018, October 1, EBI Consulting, a notice of an environmental response action, October 1, Mass Electric Company, a notification to a butters regarding a utility pole relocation and installation project, October 1, Mass State Legislature, chapter 246 of the Acts of 2018, allowing the town of Sturbridge to issue an additional license for the sale of all alcoholic beverages not to be drunk on the premises has become law. That's theirs, right. October 2, Charter Communications, upcoming changes to the pricing, October 3, BSC Group, a notice of intent regarding Len Mine Lane Pole Relocation and Installation Project, October 5, from the Mass Office of Disability, an invitation to create a commission on disability. October 9, the Rural Commonwealth, an invitation to write letters to the state officials to request changes in legislation and policy, October 9, Sovereign Consulting, a permanent solution statement with no conditions, the Planning Department, a final approval of the open space plan, Burgess, okay, I'm sorry, those were both dated October 9, Sovereign and Planning. October 10, Burgess Elementary School Committee, a vote to adopt a Sturbridge Energy Reduction Plan as part of the town's Green Communities Application for Designation, and October 10, from the Burgess Elementary School Committee, a vote to accept the fuel efficient vehicle policy.
Okay, just...
Oh, it keeps going. Oh, thank you. October 11, from the Planning Board, the Planning Board has voted to adopt, has voted to support the proposed amendments to the zoning bylaw regarding adult use marijuana in a 5-0 vote, and October 11, from the MIA, Health Insurance Renewal, the health insurance renewal for retirees in the MedX 2 Plan.
Okay, does anyone else have any of the correspondence?
No, but I have a question. I don't know, I know our town administrator's new, so I, I know he may not know this, but, is there a reason that we don't have a commission on disability? Because it sounds like in this letter that they have reached out to have us, the communities that, where one does not exist, and it shows that our municipality does not have one, and they're continuing efforts to work with us to form one. Is there a reason we don't have one?
No, we do have, um, what's the person, used to always be the fire chief that inspected disability and, um, ADA, no.
That's not the same.
I, I could research it, I don't, I don't know the answer, but I could do some research on it.
Can we put this on the agenda for next time, another meeting at some point?
Sure, when we get the information for it.
It's not urgent, but can we put it on there to kind of discuss it and see if it's, we should look at it a little further?
See if we should be having one.
I'll see what I can find out.
I mean, you know, I think it's not a bad thing if we can look at maybe why we don't do it and what we could. Thank you.
You may have a committee that's inactive.
There's a few of them. I did get a letter from, um, the Elderbus Services, and it's on reviewing our board of directors members, I find your community does not have a representative. The bylaws of SCM Elderbus Incorporated allows for one board member to be appointed by the committees, um, Communities Board of Selectmen. We ask for your assistance in securing a board member. Due to our goal of serving the elderly and disabled, some communities have appointed their council on aging director or outreach worker to serve as their representative. SCM Elderbus Inc. requires board members to be a resident or an employee of the town they represent. Also, board members shall not be on our board and the board of any other contract, subcontract, et cetera, at the same time whenever there is a chance for conflict of interest. The board of directors usually meets quarterly, February, May, August, and November. The board member will receive an agenda with pertinent information before each meeting. It is the desire of SCM Elderbus Inc. to have active board members that will aid us in bringing our company forward into a bright and lasting future. Thank you for your time and consideration to this request. If you have any questions, contact. How fortunate Heather's here this evening. No, it just popped up. Would you be willing to be the, uh...
My only concern is I'm not, I'm not a resident.
No, our employee.
But, and...
Yeah, yeah, it said resident or employee.
Yeah, I know.
Okay, that's good. Janay, we can get a letter out to contact and let them know that Council on Aging Director very nicely volunteered.
Yeah.
Give them...
They're just giving me the, uh, it's more than a viewer.
Give them, give them, give them her contact. Okay.
You want me to do my re, my report, it's pretty quick.
Yeah.
Give me another minute, in case anybody else does come in. Okay, uh, I, I just, as a follow-up to a discussion from our correspondent from our last meeting, which, uh, selectmen super not brought up the issue of the, uh, the, um, cable company trying to, um, trying to leave the regulations for rates of, I did some research and found that the Mass National Association is involved with this and very concerned, and actually sent me this draft letter that's sent to other communities, which I put together, and if the board like, liked me to, I'll be happy to mail that out, sign it on behalf of the, the board, to, um, ask that this does not happen. It's a federal, it's a federal law.
How's the board feel?
I would, I would support that.
Good.
Yeah, I, I definitely...
Yeah, I was, I was, I didn't realize it was such an active issue, it is a big issue.
Yeah, it is a MMA issue, I...
Right, so we'll, I'll get, I'll get that out.
It was discussed at the, uh, the, uh, Policy Committee on Transportation, Public, Public Works Transportation and Public Utilities Meeting that I went to, uh, a month ago in Boston.
And the second one was a letter we received from a rural, um, group of communities that this town is part of, and they also noticed that the towns are being cut back on their aid to receive from the states for open space, and asked that we send the letter, and I would be willing to do that on behalf of the board if you'd like me to send that.
Okay, who wouldn't support that?
So it's good to try to get more aid. Yes, and unfortunately, it is an area that towns are always cut on, not really getting their share. And, uh, I know we had the, we have our senior center here to talk about the, uh, Metrofounding Community, which I, I did it, I was able to attend last week, um, it was very well attended by, um, various groups, businesses, it was, it was a very bad night, too. I was very surprised, and representatives are, both representatives were at this event in a confused election, and it was just very, very, done very well, and, and I think Heather did a good, great job. And I know she'll be talking about that tonight, and what she would like to see the board's selectmen do to, to see it go forward. I don't have it on the agenda, but I know we might be talking about, uh, the tentative agreement with the consultant that we're gonna have for the town administration search, uh, if he, now he's trying to come in on Thursday, and if it's possible, he may wish to meet with members of the board, and, and when you have a chance, to let me know when your availability is, I can try to coordinate that if you're available.
What time is he, what time are they coming?
They, they're gonna be here, I think, at 10, but they're asking to start at 11:30 and half hour apiece, so, and he says it's possible to meet with one or, one or two selectmen on that day. If not, they can arrange other times, he just happened to be here, so he asked me to see if he was available.
If they're here till about 12, I could prob, I might be able to make it around noon to 12:30, but other than that, I can't make it.
Okay, anybody, anybody else?
I'm available all.
Okay.
Up until 5.
Well, I would think he would be here at noon, because our meeting with him is at 10. I can't imagine we're gonna take less than an hour.
No, he, he indicated from 11:30 on.
Right, what I'm saying is if Priscilla wanted to be here at noon, he'll, he'll stay around.
I agree, I agree, and this, and this, I noted that.
I, I know, I'm not guaranteeing I can be here, so if you don't see me around 12ish, 12:15, you'll know I'm not.
I'm sure, I'm sure he's planning on, or they're planning to come back more often.
Oh, good.
He just asked me to at least start it up.
That's this Thursday?
Yeah, the 18th. Okay, that's all.
Okay, anybody else, uh, Chase, would you, is that a bad day for you?
No, I'm hoping to make it, it's just...
Any particular time or?
Yeah, but I'm hoping I couldn't be here right at, you know, 11 o'clock, but...
I think it's 11:30 there.
Or 11:30, I just don't, you know, 10 problems happen by nine.
I'll have you down as 10, 11:30 and 12, on this note, and if, and if you don't make it, we'll just reschedule. Mike, I don't know, any thoughts?
Uh, there's a Worcester County Public Works Forum that's sponsored by, uh, by CMR PC from 10 to noon, so, um, if I can get out of that early, I'll...
You can come afterwards, I mean, it's not, you don't have to be, it could be every half hour, it's a half hour, you just want me to try to schedule people?
3:30, 1 o'clock, I, I can be here on Thursday.
And Mary, you'll be here, and Mary, you'll, you can let me know, I'll talk to you afterwards.
Yeah, well, anytime.
Okay, okay, good, I'm, I'm done, thank you.
Okay, okay, it is 7, Mary?
In accordance with Mass General Lodge, chapter 138, the board of selectmen will hold a public hearing on Monday, October 15, 2018, at 7:00 PM regarding the application of an all alcohol beverage liquor license filed by Meritudanen Inc., doing business as Lucky Mart. This hearing will be held at Veterans Memorial Hall, Sturbridge Town Hall, 308 Main Street, Sturbridge, Mass, and it's dated October 4, 2018.
Okay, could you please introduce yourself, the mics for the audience at home? Also, before you leave, could you sign, make sure we get correct spellings?
Uh, good evening, my name is attorney John Morady, and Demarcus Law Offices. With me is, uh, Dharmesh Patel, um, one of the shareholders, owner of, I'm gonna say it wrong, Martin Adon Inc., um, and they, as you know, have applied for a, um, all alcohol package stroll license for Lucky Mart at 122 Main Street in Sturbridge. The town has already approved this through special legislation, um, the home petition, um, so now we're asking for formal approval, um, through the 138 process. Dharmesh will be the manager of record, um, he is tip certified, they will utilize a ID scanning system when they start to sell the alcohol product, um, he is familiar with retail sales, he co-owned an Irish store in the state, um, and is familiar with the alcohol beverage requirements, um, through the state and, and the town. That, any questions you guys may have?
Any questions from the board? You know, all we have to do is write the letter to the governor to clear up the language.
There should be an easy method to, to solve this.
That's what council told us, that's also what Senator Goby's assistant mentioned, that it should be quickly done, because it's been approved already.
Yeah, it does take the ABCC, you know, four to six weeks to approve a license anyway, so...
Oh, we find it longer than that.
Yeah, that's true.
I just, I just want to say that I, I personally am in favor of adhering to the maximum amount of liquor license allowed by state law, so I have not been voting in favor of special legislation for the other two. So I, I don't plan, and it's not personal to Lucky Mart, I actually go there myself for your business, but I think that the state law's there for a reason, and it puts a maximum amount based on population and size, and I'm not in favor of, um, exceeding that.
Okay, anything else from the board? Anybody in the audience have any comment? Okay, is there a motion?
Motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
Any discussion, all in favor? Okay, is there a motion then to...
I make a motion to approve the, um, all alcohol beverage liquor license for Lucky Mart.
Okay, and we need a motion to, uh...
Subject to governor's...
Yeah, gov...
Collection of, by the governor's office.
Okay.
Second that.
Any discussion, all in favor? Okay, all opposed, three to two. Now, Janay, you have the, um, original language and all stuff that would need to go with the, uh, letter to the governor.
Yep.
Okay, thank you, hopefully it'll be quick.
Look.
Can I, can, may I ask the board to vote formally to, you know, make the request to the governor's office to have this...
Oh, she, Priscilla, my, I put it in a motion...
Subject to, but I'll make a motion that we ask the town administrator to...
Send a letter to the governor.
To send the letter to correct the governor's letter.
Second.
Please.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor?
Thank you.
Four, all opposed.
Just in case he asks for that.
Right, no, that's good.
Well, no, that was part of her original motion.
It was subject, I don't know if you, Dave would like, sometimes lawyers are funny.
I hope you didn't hear that.
Excuse me, some state lawyers. Where does it work for the state?
Funny.
Funny peculiar. Okay, we do have our counsel on aging, but before that, we do have Bob Rier. Bob? Bob's here to talk about the old burial ground.
Moving right along.
Yes. Surprising.
Got some paraphernalia. First of all, I'd like to welcome our Town Administrator.
Yeah, nice to meet you.
And I'm giving you an invitation to give you a tour of Sturbridge.
Sure.
Many people don't know where places are, and we'll take you through right to the beginning, including all the villages within the town, and I'll talk to you later about that.
Okay, thanks.
Why I'm here, most of you know that Memorial Day came, and when I was in first and second grade across the street, many, many years ago, they used to call the first and second graders out, and they'd say there's a big box of potted flowers, and you had to take one and put one at every grave where you see an American flag. These graves are important, they're forgotten. Probably across the country, they're forgotten. These are the men who served in the Revolutionary War. We have our freedom today because of what they did way back in around 1775. After we talked about it, I went to the principal of the elementary school, and she agreed to send a busload of children down, as we did back in 1939, and the Public House purchased flowers for us as a donation, and each youngster that came was to take a pot of geranium out, as we did, and put it where there's an American flag. We had a nice ceremony. This was done, the Senator and Representative were there, many of the ladies from the Job, I'm going to forget his last name, from Dudley, D-A-R, were there. The Regent from the Timothy Bigelow chapter was, had been hospitalized, so she couldn't attend. But we had a nice turnout, and people said this was something that needed to be done. After Memorial Day, I took a walk through the cemetery, and I found three bronze markers that said SAR, Sons of the American Revolution. And I thought about that, I said, somebody put these on many, many years ago. Every one of these Revolutionary War veterans should have a marker on their grave. And this is what they look like. Bill Bonzley, who's a resident of Sturbridge, his wife Jude works at the library, many of you probably know her, on his own, because he had done someplace that he'd lived before, went through the whole old burial ground and researched every grave in there. He's got information on the families, but to me, the most important thing he did for us was he identified the grave of every Revolutionary Soldier buried in the old burial ground. Of the 124 men who served, 64 are interred in the old burial ground, and he says everyone, they're verified through Findagrave.com, Ancestry.com, and the D-A-R, so we know it's an accurate count. So, he agrees that it should have something on the grave. So, I went to FlagGuys.com and found, yes, they have Revolutionary War. I called them medallions, but they're really, it's really a flag holder. I asked the Lions Club if they would purchase 64 flag holders, and that's what this is. Has a place where the post goes in, in the top part where the flag goes. We have delivered this morning 64 Revolutionary War medallions. I've called them medallions, as I said before. Now pass this around, so you can see them up close. It depicts a patriot in 1775. On Thursday, November 8, four days before, or three days before Veterans Day, I have two classes from the Coopville Burris Elementary School coming to place flags in these flag holders. Bill Bonzley and I will put the flag holders in place prior to that Thursday, so that there'll be no mistakes and none will be missed. And this is an invitation for each of you to attend, and for the Town Administrator to also come. Invited guests so far, and there may be more, will be the Regent from the Timothy Bigelow chapter of the Sons of the American Revolution will be here, the Regent from the Dudley, D-A-R, will be here, Senator Gobie will be here, Representative Smoller is coming, and I hope our Town Administrator can come, and Chairman of the Board will come and welcome the people, the attendees there to the event. It's not a long event, maybe a half hour, but the best part will be when the children go out, each will be given a flag to put in a flag holder. So, our Revolutionary War veterans will be identified, anybody walking through the cemetery will know, oh, I don't know any of these guys, but he was a Revolutionary War veteran. We're going back a couple hundred years for this. So, you are invited. I hope you all can come, and there was a, Ken, I think you'll be impressed with seeing this done, and to see these youngsters, as I did all those years back, and I remember it well, and I think these kids someday will say, gee, how can we, we put flags of Revolutionary War veterans just prior to Veterans Day. I was just in Halifax and went to the Citadel, and they volunteer work in there, just telling me how big Veterans Day is in Canada. He says, most towns will do something, it's a parade, a celebration. We in America don't care. We don't care. People have forgotten the Revolutionary War. You don't hear about very many Veterans Day celebrations. Worcester, I'm sure, and Boston will have a parade, but all the towns that used to do this, they don't do it anymore. And I just have a feeling that people have just forgotten. So, this is one way to say Veterans Day in 2018 will be remembered in Sturbridge. So, I hope you come. Thank you for letting me be here and present this idea to you.
Thank you, Bob.
Thanks, Bob.
Okay, next on the agenda, we have a few warrant articles to go through, so we will need a motion to reopen the warrant. Excuse me?
You should let the media know, so it gets a little public attention, too, Bob.
Sorry?
I said, let the newspapers know, so it gets some public attention.
They have a press release already.
Oh.
I think we've got all the bases covered. All we can do is not have a blizzard.
Yeah.
And if we do, we'll still do it.
No, still.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Okay, is there a motion to reopen the warrant for the special town meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on favor? Okay, Ted, you want to go through with us?
Article 34 is for the previous year bills, I believe.
Yeah, the unpaid bills.
Right, unpaid bills. And we have received information from Barbara Berry on that, and the amount, I'll try and see what the amount is.
$913, $910.21.
Pretty, and we have an explanation for the three different proceeds that we should transfer at town meeting.
Since we voted this 5-0, did we already vote with open numbers?
Just put the article on, I believe, but we didn't have the amount.
910.
We didn't have the amount.
Mm-hmm.
So, that's Article 34.
Okay, is there a motion then to approve the article?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on favor? Okay, 5 to 0.
Okay, Article 35 and 36 are related to the Town Administrator's search, and I know we have Mr. Hagerty here, and we have him down as well to speak to it, and perhaps we should have him speak first, because I think he has background information from your search committee.
Bill.
On it.
Jim's here, too.
No, Jim's here, too.
Good evening.
I like your tie, Bill.
Pardon me?
I like your tie.
Sitting on one of our members.
Kind of figured that.
Sort of inspiring. I don't wear that often. Good evening. The Town Administrator's Search Committee that you appointed last month met initially on September 26, and well, it's redundant for the Board this evening. I would like to introduce, at least publicly, the members of the committee. They include Mary Dowling, who's representing the Board of Selectmen, who's also functioning as our secretary, Tom Ford, Sturbridge Police Chief, who represents the town's department heads and is also serving as vice chair, and three town residents, Eric Gaspar, Jim Waddick, to my right, and myself, Bill Hagerty, who is serving as committee chair. The composition of the committee, as you know, is set forth very specifically in the Town Charter. At its initial meeting, the search committee discussed how we could proceed in recruiting a new Town Administrator. We were aware that the Board of Selectmen had engaged in some initial conversation regarding the hiring potentially of a search firm or recruiting firm, but determined that the Charter is very clear with respect to your charge, you were putting a search committee to find or perform the task of recommending three finalists to you. The search committee felt that there were some potential challenges, as we discussed it, particularly at this time in terms of municipal management recruitment. There's a growing number of current managers who are retiring, providing increased opportunities, but at the same time, there are very fewer individuals entering the management profession, and many of the individuals, and very good individuals in the profession, are opting to stay in very secure positions. The result of these forces is there's a much smaller candidate pool for municipalities. My experience, as I think members of the Board knows, I've served as Chair of the Search Committee back in 2014, and at that time, we had, we went out twice. The first time, we could not come up with three candidates to present to the Board, so we went back out on the second search, and we managed to come up with three candidates at that point. We had a total of 74 applicants. Most, I'd say many of them were probably not qualified. They were, in some instances, someone had served as a secretary to a town manager and felt because of their years of experience that they had some degree of skill in that area, and so a lot of the applicants were of that caliber. More and more today, Commonwealth cities and towns are utilizing professional recruiting firms or companies who are aggressively seeking out qualified candidates and encouraging them to apply for administrative positions. It was through that, such a process, that Mr. Gollman was recruited and left employment with Sturbridge recently. It was pointed out that it's very difficult for a search committee members to individually contact prospective candidates in the selection process. As a result of conducting our own search, we would be in a rather passive process through which the position would be advertised. We would then secure applications from prospective candidates, and it was, you know, really felt that before we started, we really should sit down with a couple of search firms who had a record of success in terms of recruiting management, municipal management personnel. And we did that on October 4, and we invited two firms in and spoke with them at length about the scope of services. Following the presentation, the search committee decided that they wanted to deliberate for at least a week, spend some time talking with the references that they had provided, and then come back and meet. At a subsequent meeting on October 10, the search committee voted unanimously to use Community Paradigm Associates LLC, a multi-dimensional organization focusing on governmental profit, nonprofit, community, and business concerns, to help us conduct the search process. A copy of the proposal, I think, has been provided to you by Mr. Kozak. Ironically, this is the same company that successfully convinced Mr. Gollman to consider applying for the position of Town Administrator in Weston. While the Town Charter provides for the establishment of a search committee, there's no provision made for the fiscal support of the search process. After considerable discussion, the search committee is here this evening to request the Board of Selectmen to initiate a transfer from the reserve fund in the amount of $11,800 to cover the expense of the search. Included in that amount would be a consulting fee of $9,800 for Community Paradigm, and $2,000 to cover the costs of advertising and printing to be borne by the town, as well as security investigations of the three finalists that will ultimately be presented to the Board of Selectmen for their consideration. So, that's the first reason we're here. Secondly, during our discussions with the two recruiting firms, we asked their recommendations with respect to reasonable salary range for Town Administrators in central Massachusetts at this time. When we last sought to fill the position in 2014, we advertised the salary range as being $95,020 to $134,200. At the time of his departure, Mr. Gollman was earning approximately $145,000. Both recruiting firms that we spoke with felt that a range of $140,000 to $160,000 would attract a well-qualified candidate pool. While the search committee is charged only to present three prospective candidates to the Board of Selectmen and is not party to contractual deliberations between the successful candidate and the Board of Selectmen, we would urge the Board of Selectmen to position the town not only to attract the caliber of candidates that we would seek, but also reach a reasonable contract, but place themselves in a position that they would be able to reach a reasonable contractual agreement with the candidate the Board would eventually choose. Mr. Kozak has provided a listing of salaries that he researched for towns Sturbridge has been using in recent years as comparable communities, and he's also included a salary survey completed by the Edward J. Collins Jr. Center for Public Management at the University of Massachusetts. It is our understanding that the Sturbridge Finance Director has submitted to the Board of Selectmen a warrant article for a special town meeting scheduled on October 29 to cover the cost of vacation time that Mr. Gollman accrued in the amount of $11,476. It would be our sincere recommendation that the Board of Selectmen increase the amount in that warrant article to $20,000, which would accommodate the suggested salary range. While the funds would be there if the town meeting were to vote positively on the article, the Board of Selectmen ultimately would make the determination as to the extent of any expenditure pending negotiations, obviously, with the new Town Administrator. I'd like to thank the Board for the opportunity to speak with you this evening on those two issues, and we're certainly open to any questions that you might have of the search committee.
Okay, let's look at the Article 35, the first one, costs associated with the Town Administrator's search. Any questions from the Board on that?
I just want to clarify, we initially put an article on to for town meeting, but the committee was interested in trying to get the process moving as soon as possible, and there is an article, so I guess I would ask tonight the Board to vote to support the article.
Yeah, well, we had put down the article before, but we had no dollar amount.
Correct. And that's what tonight's purpose is, and then also to consider a reserve fund transfer, which it would present to the Finance Committee tomorrow night. So, hopefully, it would pass tomorrow night, so the process could start sooner, but if it did not, you would still have an opportunity at town meeting to secure the funds.
As you know from the invitation that Ted gave you a while ago with respect to the primary individual, Bernie, coming out on Thursday, obviously, if we've got to go to the town warrant article, then it's something that we probably would have to just really delay. We certainly wouldn't expect them to come out without any possibility of being remunerated. So, we would be delaying the process till after the 29th. The committee's feeling is that we would much prefer to get going, and the sooner we go, the better, and that's the reason we would prefer to go the route of the reserve fund transfer.
Yeah, because I, go ahead, Mary.
No, I just want to add that I think Ted also recommended it, and I went to see Barbara, and she recommended the reserve fund transfer as well, as a way to expedite the process, and thought it was a legitimate type of reserve fund transfer, so.
The amount, $11,800 for the reserve transfer? For, so Article 35 is $11,800?
It's a combination of that plus additional funds toward a salary which is lower, $8,000?
Well, that's the, that's the next article.
Okay, that's the next article.
This article is strictly.
You're right, you're right, I'm sorry.
The $9,800 for a consultant, $2,000. This article is strictly, $9,800 for consultant, $2,000 for advertising.
And that would be passed over in the event the FinCon and the board voted in favor of the reserve fund transfer, particularly the FinCon, but we want the support of the board as well.
But asking for support on both, because if you don't have one, you would probably try to go for the other.
But these are two separate articles, correct?
Yep, and two separate actions, one reserve fund and one's article.
Yes, so.
The article's only staying in the event that the FinCon votes against the reserve fund transfer. We can still pursue it with a motion.
This is a safety article.
Correct.
Safety net.
And it's possible the finance committee could possibly turn down the reserve fund, but still support the article, so that's another reason to.
Why aren't things ever simple?
Nothing's, I'm just trying to help cover your bases.
Oh, I know. So any other questions on Article 35 then? Is there a motion then to support the article with the $11,800?
I make a motion to, oh.
No, go ahead.
To support the, we can't, we can't rush too fast. To support the article with $11,800 as the amount in Article 35.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor? Okay, five to nothing on that. Okay, now Article 36.
Before you go to 36, do you want to vote for the reserve fund transfer as well at this point? Or do you want to wait to after you vote the articles?
Well, we don't really do those, but we can motion to support it.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to support a reserve fund transfer for the purposes of the search committee stated in the amount of $11,800.
Oh, wait a minute, see, I'm confused on this.
Me too.
I don't.
We don't usually do that.
Well, we're not asking for a reserve fund transfer for the costs associated with the search. We're asking for a reserve fund transfer on the next article, I thought.
No, no, this article, this article.
It doesn't, to see if the town wants to transfer a sum of money.
The article itself is for a transfer of funds, but as was discussed, you could go sooner if the finance committee agrees for a reserve. And I guess tonight you might support that request.
See, we've never been asked, as a matter of fact, no.
I'm new here, so I just.
No, I know, but it's always been a little bothersome that we never know what reserve fund transfers are being asked for until we see.
As your answer, I'm asking you to support.
Yes, so.
I think that is the sense that although it's the FinCon that approves it, the feeling of the search committee was that we wanted the support, even though it's not technically our call.
And we should, in my mind's eye, give support on anyone that's asking for a reserve fund transfer, because people go to you all the time, you know.
Yeah, I'm not trying, I'm not trying to.
Actually, it's not new, Bill. Years ago, all reserve fund transfers used to be passed by the Board of Selectmen for their opinion. It was still up to the FinCon to say yea and aye on it. But now the only time is, you know, if you read the agenda, and even the agenda's not that specific. Yeah, I know, okay, so.
So this is a reserve fund transfer for the $11,800?
Correct.
Just for the consulting firm and the $2,000 kind, okay.
And related expenses.
Related expenses. So is there a motion then to approve a reserve fund transfer of the $11,800?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second, okay.
You two are dual.
I'll take this one, second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, now, the next one is for the town administrator's salary account. That's 36. Well, I don't know.
I hope.
Nothing is tonight, okay? This is a recommendation for $23,000 for the cost associated.
That's a typo, it should be $20,000.
Twenty, exactly, I was going through the math, because it adds up to $19,760.
I'm not sure how I got to 23 from those two numbers, but.
Article 36 should just read 20,000.
Article 36, okay, what's the 20,000 for?
It's for the funds needed for the rest of the fiscal year for the proposed upper limit of the new administrator's salary as recommended by the Town Administrator's Search Committee, and $11,476 for former town administrator's vacation reimbursement.
The 11,476.
$11,000, how much?
$11,476, that was Barbara's amount.
That's Leon's?
Yes, she was moving forward with that.
Does that come out of the 20,000?
Yes.
It would.
Okay, so you're looking for approximately $8,000 for what?
$230,000. That's for the upper limits if we extend the pay scale for the town administrator.
So $8,000 would make it approximately 157, is that what we're saying? They said 160, but that doesn't add up numbers-wise.
Well, it's not a full year.
It's only half, it would be about half a year.
Okay, so what, okay, but if you're going to give it $8,000 for this, is for this year?
Till the end of June.
But till the end of June?
Yeah.
Correct.
It would have to be in the, this is to get us through this fiscal year, we're assuming that we put a new town administrator in on January 15th. No, that would be 160 if it was the upper, upper limit. What we were, because we inquired of Barbara, if we put a new town, no, it's not, because you're a math teacher, you'll get it. If we put in a new town administrator.
Well, depends how you, how you play with the numbers.
Oh, no, I'm not trying to play.
New map.
If you put the new town administrator in approximately, you said, the January 15th?
Someplace in there.
That will take us from then, God bless you, to the rest of the fiscal year. And that's assuming at $160,000. That would be the upper limit that we advertise for. Obviously, it's up to the Board of Selectmen to negotiate the contract. The contract, if it's a newcomer, could be below or end.
145.
Could be 142, could be 150. But we inquired, what would the amount be to cover in the event it is the maximum amount?
Let me ask you a question. What are the odds that it's going to be on the low end and not at 157 or 160?
The odds are probably very good.
Very little?
No, probably very good, because if you're saying 160, you're looking at the top of the scale, right? I think there's people out there that'll be very willing to negotiate in the middle, not.
But if they, but if they know the cap is at, well, I'm just going to say this from my perspective. Our, I looked at these numbers, and I did a little bit of my own homework before I came too, but like, the population in Sturbridge is about 9,500, 9,600, give or take. And we're at 149 is our max right now.
Correct.
Our per capita income is 42,689. If you look at some of these other towns, like you have, Southborough is listed. Southborough has about 10,038 people, which is not that many more than we do, maybe about, say, 1,000 more than we have. They pay 157, but their per capita income is $110,000 plus some change. I think that myself personally, 149 is a good chunk of change. And for a town this size, we have no residency requirements, so we have no restriction on where that person is going to live, whereas some of these towns have residency requirements. I haven't done that research, so I can't speak which ones, but I do know that there are communities that have residency requirements. We don't. So we offer the person a very decent salary, a good benefits package, and they can pretty much live wherever they want. We don't hold them to live here. Personally, I think 149, for me, is a very good start, is a very good place. Now, what we have no restriction on, and I think Selectmen Blanchard said this when we were talking about Leon, we don't have a restriction on how much of an increase that person gets. So in other words, if we felt that person deserved a 5% raise, we could give it to them.
That's right.
All right, am I right? Okay, so if that person is very good, why not bump that person to a 5% raise if we felt it warranted? But I can't see starting at 160, in the area where we could possibly come to 160 or 155 or 157, I just think it's a big bump.
Oh, you could.
Every three years, if we go through this every three years, three years from now, we're going to be looking at 180, and then what, 190? Where do we cap it, is my concern? Where does it stop?
Well, I don't think we are really, where do we cap it it has to stop? I think we have to pay to get the quality we want. And I don't think 140 to 160 is unreasonable to get good people out there. Now, you mentioned Southborough and their per capita income, that's fine. But you also have to look at the budget that Sturbridge has, the money we bring in. I mean, it's astounding with our hotel motel tax and our meals tax. Southborough doesn't have all that to the extent that we do. Most towns don't, they're envious of what we have. Our free cash is certified at 4.1 something million dollars. 4.7? I missed the loop at the top. I mean, we.
What's an extra, you know?
600,000. We can afford to pay to get good. And I, I mean, the police chief, I can't see the police chief making more than his boss. I mean.
But most communities, the highest paid is the superintendent of schools usually, in many communities.
Oh, and you have to look here, but we have regional, which is tough.
Right, but I'm not talking even regional, I'm talking not regional. In many communities.
The highest paid person in our community happens to be a member of the police force.
But he's been a town employee for 30 years.
No, I'm not talking about the chief.
Oh.
Yeah, but they all get overtime details. I mean, we can all earn that kind of money.
I just want, I mean, I can appreciate how Priscilla feels, certainly. What I thought was interesting is when we talked with the two finalists for the professional search firm, we asked each of them the same question, I believe it was Bill's. And so they didn't have the benefit of knowing what the other person was going to say. Bernie Lynch, who we are, hope to contract with, said central mass, 150 to 160. His lower limit was actually 10,000 more than the Collins Center. It was 150 to 160. And the Collins Center was, to be precise, 138 to 160. So I thought it was really noteworthy that the upper limit for both these professional firms who do this as a living was the same. Their lower limit was different by 10,000, but we went with the lower limit because we said, well, maybe we'll find a rock star who's climbing, and we're in at the lower limit. The other two comments I wanted to make was, one of the towns we were told to take particular note of is Charlton, a bordering community who just renegotiated the contract in order to keep the town administrator, from what I hear. I don't know all those circumstances, but I do know that person's getting paid $145,000 plus deferred compensation of an additional $14,500. And so that brings that person with the deferred compensation to 159.5. So that's a bordering town to Sturbridge. And then the only other thing I wanted to say is, when Priscilla inquired whether, what are the odds of us getting somebody below 160 if that's the upper limit advertised? I don't know who's going to apply, obviously. But I do know that Leon, even coming with nine years of experience from West Boylston, and I think it was Mary that negotiated the contract, we still didn't pay him the very upper limit of what was the range at the time. So I don't think we should automatically assume that our board will negotiate 160 at the very upper limit, because the pattern has been, we didn't do it for Leon, and Leon came with quite a bit of experience as a town administrator.
I mean, that's why you have a range. I mean, granted, somebody could, you know, demand, not demand, but request the top limit, but chances of that, when you have a range, you know, and you negotiate, you can get somebody, but our range is low.
My, my view is, I, you know, I, I'm really not an expert on compensation, especially for town administrators, so I would have to go with the experts, Collins Center.
Yeah, there are, there are other things.
I have to listen to the experts.
There are other things that go into town administrative, town managers' contracts too. Deferred compensation, car use, travel expenses. So a lot of them, you know, they may be making 152, but add up their other things, and, you know, it's well up there, Chase?
I just, I mean, of course, these firms are going to offer that kind of money. It makes their job easier. If we say 160, they have more people to pick from, and it takes the burden off of them. I just feel for our, the size of our community, 145 to 149,000, you know, I just read that, you know, the town administrator, Wesbro, left for Lexington, and when he left Wesbro, he was making 155,000. We're not, I don't feel we're Wesbro.
Oh, that was base, you, he had a, he had a much better package than base salary. That's what I'm saying, a lot of them do.
That's.
We don't have much of a extended.
Did he have deferred comp?
And things, and he had.
You know, I'd be more open to approve a deal, like, you know, they come here, they work, then the board votes, and we get them up there from there. But I just feel a package of 145 to 149,000 is a, is a heavy salary.
That's a rather narrow range, and as far as you comment though, Chase, about making it easier for the recruiters, I don't think that's their intent. I think their intent is that they know what's out there, and they know what it costs to get what's good out there. So that's just my personal.
And these recruiters, unlike sometimes in the private sector, they're not getting a percentage of the salary.
Right, no, yeah.
So I could definitely agree with you there for other recruitments. They like to push up the salary. Here, it's going to be a straight, we're going to pay them even if the candidate is going to make 140.
Yeah, it's a base.
Right.
Okay, so, does somebody want to make a recommendation then on Article 36? The, how's it written here? Amount of 20,000 for the costs associated with town administrators, yes, 8230 for funds needed for the rest of the fiscal year for the proposed upper limit of the new administrator's salary as recommended by the Town Administrator's Search Committee, and the $11,476 for the former town administrator's vacation reimbursement. Does someone?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? Three to two?
No, I, I just want to clarify to the vote, they're voting for the article amount. Does that also imply that you are supporting their proposal to go to 160 in the advertise? Or is that something separate?
That's how I understood that.
Well, I'm taking it that it's understood, but if we want to make a motion.
I just want to see if that's what your implication was by doing that.
Yeah.
You think we should have a motion on the salary range to be advertised?
It wouldn't hurt, I think, if you clarified.
Yeah, and that, you know, that would be subject to appropriation, but.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to, to support or to approve, not support, to approve the salary range to be advertised for a new permanent town administrator as recommended by the search committee of, what was it, 138 to 160?
140.
140 to 160.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Three to two?
Can I ask a quick question? So what was the first motion?
That's on the Article 36. Support, place and support Article 36. And I just wanted to add that Bernie Lynch and his associate were very, I don't want to say adamant, but they really did want to talk to the Board of Selectmen in terms of what they are looking for in a town administrator. They want input. And I believe Bernie said they will also talk to department heads, and, because they are very interested in going far beyond what the search committee tells them, look, this is what we're looking for. He want, they want to talk to staff.
What about the community?
And they're going to reach out. I think even there's a community night where people will come in.
That's cool.
That's good, because the community is important as well, it's not just employees.
We did that, we did that the last time. There was very many written comments from department heads. There was zero public.
But still, it should be offered.
No, I know.
It's been his proposal, and I don't want to, I didn't mean to omit that, because he said he is having that, and I think that's when Bill offered that, even without the firm, you did it the last time, and it wasn't.
We sat where you're sitting for about, I think, an hour.
Couple of hours.
With the TV cameras rolling, just twiddling our thumbs.
Yeah, yeah, no one came in, but maybe this time they will. I will read about it on Facebook.
...........................
We're facilities.
Conduent.
Good.
Messages.
That's good.
Just in the way, I wouldn't quite put it that way. Anything else we can help you with?
No.
Well, thank you for coming in.
The question is, can we help you with something?
Not at the moment, just get us, just get us three good candidates.
Safe travels.
Thank you.
Or one outstanding and two okays.
Pardon me?
One outstanding and two okays. To make it easy.
Maybe just three rock stars.
Yeah, three rock stars, that's what we're doing. Make it hard on us to decide.
Yes. Okay, now, Article forty, we need to amend the amount there.
Forty-nine? Forty or forty-nine?
Forty. That two hundred seventy thousand there-
Correct.
Was before the reserve fund transfer to Armagh.
Oh, okay.
So it should be now two hundred forty-two thousand six hundred forty dollars. Okay, is there a motion then to approve?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? Okay. Now, we have the Article forty-nine. Okay, now, this one I find very confusing. That's the bonds. And Barbara did clarify it because I said usually money spent comes from the water reserve fund and the sewer reserve fund, but these were projects that were paid for originally out of those budgets, so the money can go back. But on the explanation, we have this single sheet of paper. The part that confuses me is that the town appropriate nineteen thousand two hundred fifty-four dollars and sixty-nine cents to pay cost of lighting on the town bond field. I would assume that should go with Article sixty-seven, which we didn't have an amount for CPC funds. What do you think, Ted?
I, I read, at this point, I don't know.
Excuse me, Article what, sixty-seven?
No, thirty-seven.
Thirty-seven, I'm sorry.
They put a placeholder in until they got the, and then they did have the amount of one hundred fifty-six. It's confusing.
I know, Barbara, we attend in the Finance Committee tomorrow to explain this more thorough. And the article was placed by the Finance Director for the bond proceeds, which you can use for other uses, as explained. I, as far as the explanation, I, I thought it was water and sewer related, but I, I also saw, which was pointed out by the Chairman, that it also included a barn, which it made. I just don't have, I didn't have an answer for you. I didn't research it until I learned about this just before tonight.
Yeah, because the amount, they have money in here unless Barbara somehow can take nineteen thousand.
For your purpose, though, I think the only need to support the transfer and then let the, the, the Finance Director clarify what it would be used for.
Yeah, because she may be using it and deducting it from the one hundred fifty-six that they wrote.
I don't know if you need to have an amount for this tonight, to be honest, at this point. I think it's just that you support or not support the concept of transferring for funds such as these that she has listed, which would be, which would be illegal use, as long as the funds are there.
Yeah, okay. So is there a motion then to support the Article forty-nine then, is Barbara?
How, how is the money being appropriated?
Bond proceeds, so it's extra funds that weren't being used, that you could reuse in, in it, in departments. And I don't have any more information than what we have right here.
I get that for the water and sewer, but how about the lighting?
Yeah, that's what the question was.
That's the question Barry has.
That's also coming from bond proceeds?
I, I'm assuming, but I don't really know.
It looks at this way, and it looks like she could probably be deducting that nineteen thousand two hundred fifty-four from the original hundred fifty-six thousand four hundred thirty-eight in the article.
Right, it's possible, or it could be in addition to, because she knew what was coming. I don't-
We don't know.
I don't know.
But we have already voted to place-
I guess I'd ask you to trust the Finance Director to explain it.
But we had already voted to place and support the article.
Okay, then you would need further, you would need further action then.
And it gives us-
Yeah, so we can, Barbara can straighten that out.
My question on this article was, were there specific uses of the money? And she does have specific uses in bond proceeds.
I'll try to clarify for you and send you, we'll send you an email.
Because we don't meet-
Do you do further action necessarily if you already supported it?
We can do it before town meeting. Okay, then, we've covered all the articles. Is there a motion to close the warrant for the special town meeting? So moved. Any discussion? All in favor? Well, then the fun will begin when we do the-
Did you hear somebody seconding you?
Who seconded?
Chase.
I whispered second.
I thought I saw you.
I saw Chase's hand.
I saw somebody's hand.
You whispered it, I waved.
Pick your choice.
I think we had a second whisperer here.
Pick your choice.
Okay. Next on the agenda, last but not least, okay. How's it written? Council of Aging Director Heather, would you come up, please? And your partner?
Oh, I'm gonna let, this is her show, I'm just here to help.
Oh, okay. Heather's here for her report and her dementia-friendly community.
Yes, would you?
Okay, we did get your report today.
Okay. And I'm hoping that you have my other one that I sent to you on September twenty-eighth.
Yes, the dementia one.
The one today. So I, I know you wanna know, like, what I've been doing, what I've got planned over the next few months and all that good stuff, but I'm not sure where you, how much you, I don't wanna inundate you with too much information, so.
Oh, no, we, it's better to have too much than not enough.
Okay. All right, so I guess I can start by, with what I, what I sent you today, then. As you can see, over the past six and a half months that I've been here, we have either had or have added all the following activities, like, I did the community education, we did the AAR, Real ID, which came in talking about the license, the changes to the license. Annie came in and did an overview project to let everybody know what was going on with that. We have reestablished a relationship with SALT, and I did the SALT Expo in May. We are still continuing to do the Concerts on the Lawn, Film Appreciation, Sing Along with Sue. We had a young, actually, he's now an eighth grader, but he started with us last year. He wanted to do an outreach program, Sister Sarah Outreach Program. He, he comes in once a month and he meets with the seniors, and he brings other students with him when they wanna come. And they just do a lot of discussions with the, with the seniors about, you know, what the things the seniors have done, and it's educational for both, for the kids and the seniors. We still, we have our, all of our exercise classes. We have, as Priscilla knows, we have doubled our fitness class from three classes a week to now six classes a week to accommodate that. And just so that you know how that is working out, I did a survey and I asked the simple questions of the survey based on how many, how many people, the, the fire department says we can have thirty-five people to a class. And I gave them the choice of picking thirty or thirty-five people, and the class did choose thirty people. They really, they didn't even want that many, but we went with thirty. The rest of it is, I haven't announced it to them yet, so I don't really wanna say too much tonight because I don't want anybody calling tomorrow. I wanna announce it to, to everybody at the same time. But we did come out, I met with my CLA board, I came up with a recommendation of what we should do with the classes as far as whether we're going to go with Sturbridge seniors first, and if non-seniors can participate, if out-of-town seniors can participate. And they, they answered their own questions, so the results will be given to them this week. And then it'll be in the November newsletter for them to, to work with. We ended up buying a new, a new treadmill. Our exercise class downstairs is doing great. We have our, we have our support groups. We still have our caregiver support group, our Parkinson's support group. And of course, as you know, we added the Memory Cafe, which we launched in June sixth. We've had, although our attendance isn't high, it's consistent. And it's been amazing, the people that have been reaching out to us to help sponsor a Memory Cafe. It's been fantastic. We, for education, we have, we have the Ask the Nurse. We've done clear captions with the phones. We still offer TOPS. We've had, for health, we've had the, we have the Heritage Hearing Clinic we're bringing back, the Flu Shot Clinic we just had. And we added foot care with Nurse Jane. She actually does foot care, but she also specializes in people with diabetes, which is a huge plus to have. Information sharing, we've had the Assistant Town Clerk over. We have our chats with Jen and Satch. We have our monthly CLA board meetings, Feasible Study Committee, which, by the way, Ted, I am still looking for that for you. That you'd asked me about, the feasible study thing, I didn't forget. We do, still do our outreach and shine. We have added Tyler from Senator Goby's office has been coming over once a month. We also added a new, a veterans agent once a month. We have the Friends Group meetings every month. For recreation, we are still doing bingo, cribbage, pitch, dominoes, and manjong. We, I don't know how this got in here, but we had Chicken One-O-One. We had some gorgeous chickens come in, and they talked about, these people talked about their chickens, and they were beautiful. Everybody loved it, it was really pretty. They bring us, they actually bring us eggs, like, every single week. So we give out the eggs, it's really cool. We still do our knitting, and we offer our movies and film appreciation. For social activities, since I've been there, we've done the interactive, interactive rock and roll. The guy came and sang, that was, that was a hit. The Llewellye Party that we did when I was first there, that was a real hit. We did our memorial reception. We did a reception for Bill Grandone. Volunteer Appreciation Day, because we hadn't done one last year. We kind of got every volunteer together, and we did one big volunteer appreciation for everybody. So just let everybody know that we thank them. And then going forward, we, we won't be done the same way in the future, but we just wanna make sure that going forward, and with me being a new director, that we recognized everybody who's volunteered. And we have the Gypsy Moon Belly Dancers, which were senior belly dancers. The youngest one was sixty-five, the oldest one was eighty-five, and they were amazing. So we're actually gonna be having them back for the, to come see us again. And we're actually gonna have them for our Memory Cafe. So the things that are, that we've, I've been working on for October, we did the bingo. We are focusing on Breast Cancer Awareness Month for the month of October, so everything was pink prizes. We're doing the Fallon Grocery Bingo tomorrow. The town clerk is gonna be coming over to see us on the sixteenth to discuss voting, early voting. And we will be doing the Go for Life Walk at the Burgess Elementary School this Thursday. It's from three to five PM. It's gonna be inside the gym, so anybody can do it. It's an internet intergenerational with the Burgess kids. So anybody from any level, everything's free, so it's gonna be really fun. We're hoping that people show up for that. We are doing, this Friday, we are doing the Oktoberfest. So we're gonna turn our senior center into a beer garden. That should be fun. We are doing a magic show on the twenty-third. We have magician coming. The Alzheimer's Association Workshop, which is the dementia conversation on the twenty-fifth in lieu of the dementia-friendly community that initiative I'm working on. Senior Safe with Mary Lou Volpe of, in the American Red Cross. They'll be coming in on the twenty-sixth and working with the seniors to make sure the seniors have fire detectors, and then they're going to go out, make appointments to go out and install these fire detectors in their homes. We are also going to have, the preschool kids are gonna be coming down on the thirty-first. They're Halloween costumes, and we're gonna do a storytime with them. That should be pretty fun. And of course, this time of year, my outreach coordinator, Leslie, is extremely busy with fuel assistance for outreach, so we're still working on that. November is all set. We are going to be doing, giving back. We are going to be working with the Burgess Elementary School, collecting food items for Thanksgiving for the children and the families of Burgess. So we're asking for all kinds of canned foods, things like that, to make a Thanksgiving basket. And the cutoff date, drop-off date will be by November sixteenth, so we can get them over to the school. We are doing an Alzheimer's Talk with Dr. Jonathan Jackson from Mass General Hospital on the second. He's coming to talk to us about some major breakthroughs that they've had over the past sixty days. We're doing, I'm working, working with Sergeant Payne and Kevin Filczek, doing the SALT Emergency Preparedness Class at Old Sturbridge Village, and that will be on November eighth. We have ragtime. The guy's coming in, and I haven't seen him yet, so I don't know what he's gonna be doing, but he brings his own piano, his own guitar, his own banjo. He does his own one-act show, and I, I, he seems like it's gonna be really fun. The Principal Assessor, Ann Murphy, will be over talking about the tax programs that are available to our seniors on the thirteenth. Diabetes recognition in November, so we are doing a diabetes presentation. I'm gonna have to reach out to Bob, who was here earlier, if I could, because we are also offering a veterans luncheon on the fourteenth. We are offering that to, free of charge to our veterans, and it's also gonna be free of charge to widows of veterans, or widowers of veterans. We are going to be hosting it with a roving restaurant, which means one of the local restaurants is actually going to help us do the meal. And I believe it's going to be, Hearthstone Catering is gonna be the ones we're gonna be using. So that will be on the fourteenth. We are also doing, bringing back afternoon activities. We haven't done that in a while, and we're going to be doing things like two o'clock trivia and Family Feud and Name That Tune. So afternoon activities, it's kinda quiet in the afternoon. We need to bring in more people and do some more stuff in the afternoon. December is in the works, but we have planned for the first week of December doing the Trim the Tree, having everybody bring in ornaments and put them on our Christmas tree. We're looking at doing a Drum Circle with Tim Kaine in December. It is National Write a Card Week in December, so we've reached out to the American Red Cross, and our seniors are going to write Christmas cards to soldiers, and the American Red Cross is going to make sure they get them. We are also doing a Secret Santa Gift Exchange, which I can't tell you anymore about because it's a secret. It's a secret. We, we are doing, the same day that we have our holiday party, we are also going to do holiday trivia with the Tantascus students. A group of kids are coming over, and we're gonna do that with them. We have Burgess Elementary School kids, as well as Tantascus students, will be coming at two separate times to do some caroling and singing with us during the month of December. We will be offering, since Christmas Day, since Christmas Eve Day is a half a day, we're going to do a Christmas Eve Day morning movie. I believe it's, we're showing one of the old, fat, old-time Christmas movies that everybody really loves. I'm drawing a blank on the name, but everybody knows it. So that'll be on the twenty-fourth.
The Wonderful Life?
I think that's it.
That's my all-time favorite.
I think that's it, I think, I think that's it.
That gets me every time.
Yep, I think that's the one. And then, of course, on the thirty-first, we are going to have a Noon Year's Eve party. So that's also in the planning. And then for January, still in the works. I only got a couple of things lined up right now because it's just so far away, but we're looking to do its bathtub safety that month. So we're looking to do bathtub safety with Harrington Hospital, and everybody's gonna get a rubber ducky. And we're also work, I'm also working with the Red Cross to do a blood drive. My goal is to do it in January. I've already spoken to Board of Health and to the Finance Director to make sure that that's all, everything can be, that can be done. And we are free and clear, so working on it for January. So that's what's happening in the senior center, what we've done and what's coming up. And of course, you all know that I have been working very diligently on, as I hope you know, on the dementia-friendly community initiative.
Heather, excuse me, but before you move on, on your Oktoberfest, you mentioned beer.
Yes. We are having root beer, birch beer, ginger beer.
No, just check 'em, because there'd be a few problems if it was real beer.
No, but I did get everybody in the newsletter because I did put down the food that we were getting and then, and beer, and then I put, gotcha, birch beer.
Good.
Ginger beer, root beer.
Okay, didn't mean to interrupt.
No, no, that's okay.
One of my favorite activities that you have is Pretty with Polly, and it didn't make the list, but-
Oh, did it miss it?
I didn't, well, I didn't hear you say anything.
Michael, do you go?
I was holding back.
All right, the cat's out of the bag. Mike is there on a monthly basis.
You know I don't.
Yes, we do offer Pretty with Polly, and we also have Timeless Treasures, which are obvious, which isn't on the list either.
Eligible.
And Pretty with Polly, in case you didn't know, is Pauline comes in and, like, a couple times a month, and she will actually do their nails, curl their hair. It's really nice.
You look good, Mike.
Thank you.
Yeah, she did a good trimming for you.
Yeah, made a trim, yes.
And Timeless Treasures is our little gift shop that we have there, which is amazing. I buy all my jewelry there.
I love that you work a lot with the children. I like to see the different age groups interact with them.
Oh, they're really, they're really fun. Yeah, it's really fun. Oh, they're really, they're really fun, yeah, it's really fun. So, we've also going to have, the nursing students will be coming back too. So, we've got from the little ones up to the high school, up to the college ones, yes. So, we've got quite a range of ages that come through.
Yeah, they used to have a program years ago that was started from acorns to oaks and it was the same thing, interaction between all age groups.
Oh, that's so cute, I like that.
Okay, I didn't mean to.
No, 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 not at all, not at all. So, yeah, that, that just, did I actually have any more questions about that? The next thing on my agenda was the dementia friendly community. I know initiative, when I was hired, Leon gave me that as one of my, my goals to work on. So, I have, I have done all the trainings that I needed to attend, all the workshops, all the presentations and the seminars. I, and I became a champion, French champion in September. So, I have been doing a lot of work with the memory cafe, working with caregivers, our support group, even, even people living with dementia, some of our seniors. And just working with Patty and the Alzheimer's Association, AARP, and I came up with a action plan, a rough, rough draft action plan, which I already shared with Patty. And the meeting on last Thursday, the eleventh, which both of you were able to make, actually all three of you were able to make, I appreciate that, was really just the getting everybody together in the community to talk about the different sectors of the community coming together and we, in order to make our town a dementia friendly community, we have to do this as a whole. And I think it's important that the select board, the administrator be on board and do this. Without you, I, we can't, we can't make this happen. I can't even take the next steps without your support and your help. So, it's really important. So, I brought Patty with me today. She is going to give you guys a little bit of information about, about dementia Alzheimer's and we have the pledge, which you guys should have gotten a copy of. I have already taken the liberty of filling it out and putting Sturbridge in the places where it needed to be. And it's just up to you guys to, to sign it and make this official so that we can go forward with Patty into the next steps and start working on making our community a dementia friendly community. So, I brought Patty Sullivan with me and she is the project, project manager for Massachusetts Project Manager, from Massachusetts Council on Aging, so.
And it's my job to help towns and communities across the Commonwealth. My, my goal, I've been told, is to get all three hundred and fifty-one dementia friendly. I have two and a half years, so. If, if all of them are like Heather, no problem, I could have it done in a year probably. So, my role with the Massachusetts Councils on Aging, supported by a lovely grant from the Tufts Foundation, is to, as I said, to help communities. And so, that is a lot of technical assistance work, helping communities sort of navigate the work that has to be done to move in the direction of dementia friendly. So, becoming a dementia, dementia friendly community is a lot easier now than it's ever been because primarily at the national level and in some communities here in the Commonwealth, people have realized what a critical issue it is. And towns have understood that they need to move on this, only because of the numbers. And so, we're, at a, at a bigger level, across the globe, someone develops Alzheimer's every sixty-five seconds. So, if you think about that, and that's just going to increase over time. So, here in this community, we run some estimates, they're pretty small at this point and they're very rough estimates and so, numbers, we can guess that, but I think the important part here is as the process moves forward, and I'll explain the process in a little bit, we'll get a much better sense of what's happening in the community. So, as Heather mentioned, this is a process that has to engage multiple sectors across the community. And we at MCOA sort of step into communities and help them understand what's out there and available and what types of sectors, who can play a role in this project. And Heather did a terrific job of pulling together people from a really wide array of, of the community here. People from first responders, fire and police were there, town selectmen were there, the town administrator was there, we had people from the faith community, we had people who had dementia and their caregivers. We had the representatives from the business community, and actually, I haven't even told you this, but one of the, the local banks here who has branches all over the Commonwealth has decided they're going to start here helping you and then are going to use that to branch out across the Commonwealth. So, that discussion was very moving towards them and they have already followed up with me about that. So, it's, it's getting people all aligned and then helping people in the community understand what exactly they need to do. And so, we are fortunate in that we have the Alzheimer's Association as a partner as well as Dementia Friendly America. And they have put together trainings and certification programs and basically a whole support team of people. So, we can very easily come into the community and train first responders, you know, and then I guess they're going to try to do it in January, right away about how to deal with a circumstance when someone clearly has dementia, when you're repeatedly called out to the same house because a caregiver can't help someone. It's very costly, it drains a lot of resources from first responders. And so, giving them the tools to, to figure out how quickly to identify the situation, to deal with it and to respond appropriately. And so, it, in the sense, I say this to people and they don't believe me, but really, working with people who have dementia is really about treating people the way, for the most part, people like to be treated anyways. You want to be respected, you want to be able to go out in your community and go to the post office and go to a restaurant and engage in ways that you can't if your community isn't welcoming to someone like you. And I, on a regular basis, can always use a little bit of patience from a lot of the people that I have to deal with in life. And really, that's what it's all about. And so, whether it's the library that has training for their staff or whether it's first responders or whether it's people in the schools, because there are programs for K through college, again, that will try and engage people, we've got a lot of resources to bring in behind Heather as she does her work here to make it a lot easier.
So, that is what we, that's what the game plan is, that's the vision that I see, what I'd like to have happen and.
Let me, let me just mention, there are a few basic steps to becoming dementia friendly in the state of Massachusetts. One is that you've got to pull together somebody who's willing to, to lead the project and we have that clearly. Another is to create an advisory team or an action team or a group of people who are willing to work, to sort of put all the pieces together. And Heather has brought that together as well. Those folks will feed into the report that she has written, although when I read the report, I guess I was here a couple of weeks ago, it was terrific. I mean, she's really thought through the issues and because of the exceptional effort you've made on training, you understand what the resources are, so you've tapped into those, which is terrific. So, we also ask that as you are going through this process, you look at some of the data that's available about your community. I passed some of that out at the meeting the other night, but mostly Heather has to be the one who looks at it and incorporates it into her report, which she has done. And then finally, we need engagement on the part of at least three sectors, you have more than that right now. Although, and I'm going to sort of say, don't do them all at once.
No, I know.
Do them one at a time, I know you get pretty excited. And then finally, we need to see a commitment on the part of leadership within the community. So, we ask the community members to sign a pledge that says you'll move forward on implementing this. And so, you have that in front of you and so, I, this is your ask, but I'll encourage you, I mean, there's so much work that's already been done here and the benefits to the community come in a lot of different ways. But, part of them are seeing cross sectors work together on an initiative is always good in, in town government. You'll begin to understand better your community when it comes to dementia. You yourself will develop a better understanding of what the disease is because all of you have some exposure to it in your family or in friends or if you don't now, you will shortly.
So, it is, I'm here tonight, other than what I came here for originally, I'm here tonight to ask the select board to read and sign and take this pledge to, and make the initiative of becoming a dementia friendly community a reality so that I can continue the work I've started and start working with all of you and with my, the other sectors and start making this vision and this initiative happen. So, that's what I'm here for tonight.
Questions from the board? Mary?
First of all, excellent, very, I'm always, well, I'll tell you, that's a comment, but I just have a question first. Is it a three-year project? Because I see that it begins the task force September two thousand and eighteen and then it will meet until September twenty twenty-one.
Well, I gave myself, I gave, this, this is a rough draft.
Right.
This is just a rough draft and there are going to be things that we won't be able to do, there will be things that I may not have put in that we, we find we can do. But in my rough draft, I wanted to give us like three years as a goal. That doesn't mean we're going to be done in three years, but in three years, within three years, I would like to see as much of this plan in place as we can implement. And then after that, it's, it's going, it's always going to be a continuing process. We will never be done with, with that. There will always be new businesses, there will always be new employees, there will always be something new and we have to continue that. And if, if, you know, the time comes when you are not on the board, it's going to be up to you to make sure that the people coming in behind you are also going to want to help support this, this initiative and keep it going. Without the, without the board and, you know, the administrator backing us, then it's going to end up fizzling out someday. So, it's going to be important that we all stay together and as things change, we make sure that people coming in behind us are going to still keep wanting to keep this initiative going.
So, you'll have like goals, like one year, you want to accomplish X and two years and three years?
Yep. And then maintaining, and we'll always be able to make, we will, we will always have the ability to make it bigger and more if people want to do that, so.
Awesome. Now Heather, I know that it was said that you already have people in mind for your task force.
Yes, actually, I reached out when I, we had the meeting on October eleventh and I asked people from the different sectors to sign, if they, to sign on, sign a paper to join the task force to help. So, I have like Sergeant Payne, who's representing the police department, he has jumped right on board, he wants to help do this. We've had, we, I, I had like, oh my gosh, sixteen different people from different sectors sign right then and there that night that they are on board to do this. And they're going to work with their, in particular, their particular sectors. We also have Annie's, Anne Hearthstone, here in town. The owner, Lenny couldn't make it to the meeting that night, but he is on board too. So, he's going to make sure that his restaurants, two restaurants are going to be on board with this and they're going to, they may even take it as far as doing a purple table reservation, which is one step further for restaurants to do. So, yeah, so we, we've definitely got plenty of different sectors, all people willing to, on the task force, ready to go and ready to do this. We just need the support.
And the task force is not, correct, a committee of the town? So, they can meet anytime they want, open meeting doesn't?
Correct. It's, it's called task force for, I guess for a lack of a better, better name. It's, it's just getting everybody that wants to do this together to do it.
Is that how it's done in other towns? How many towns have at this point initiated this?
It's about a hundred and fifty in some way, shape or form.
All starting this year?
All starting, some, some had started, this is the, the MCOA is starting the second phase. So, there was a three-year grant with another organization and then MCOA took up with the implementation side of the grant. But a number of states or communities in the, in the Commonwealth have already gone and are, have gone quite far in terms of just jumping in on this, even before the state was moving on this project. And we've also received a bit of a boost because the governor has now added this to his list in his community compact, I don't know if you're familiar with the state program. But we, he has said multiple times and his staff keeps saying that if you are dementia friendly, you'll be eligible for additional funds or extra points on your state grant applications. I would feel much more comfortable if they would give me a piece of paper and told me where to apply for the money and where, but I, we'll get there. So, we, we've got a lot of people who have stepped in, leadership in, at different levels, other community groups. And so, there's really a sort of a movement that's taken off and so, it's moving pretty quickly through the Commonwealth. I'm frankly, I'm having trouble keeping up with all of it.
That's good. That's good.
It's very good.
Good problem to have.
You know, you always talk about purple table reservations. You want to explain what that is? Because it's so much fun.
So, I hope, I hope I explained it correctly there, it makes sense. So, purple table reservations is just a way for restaurants to take it one step further. Everybody loves going to a restaurant, everybody wants to be able to go out and eat with their family. When you have dementia, going out to a restaurant can be difficult, not only for the person who has it, but for the family members. Ordering something when you can't remember what it is you like, maybe your behavior, the behavior of the person isn't exactly, you know, the best behavior. So, going out in public and being where everybody can see you, waitresses, waiters lose their patience with people, it's easy to overlook the person and speak to their party. Instead, it's, it's being disrespectful, it's hurtful. A purple table reservation means that the restaurant is going to have either, you know, it can be set times, it can be set days, but it's, it's, the restaurant decides it and they actually have a table or tables that are designated the purple table reservation. And what means is that I can call up and during the time that they're offering this and make a purple table reservation for say, my, my parents and I. My father has Alzheimer's. When we go there, my father is going to, we're going to have a waiter or waitress who has been properly trained on how to work with somebody who is living with dementia. So, what, rather than, you know, if, if my dad's having trouble explaining what he wants to eat, this person is going to be able to take the extra time, the extra patience that is required and make sure that he's able to discuss what it is he wants. And it's just being extremely respectful, it should be, but often isn't, people lose their patience. So, this is what a purple table is, there, there is no purple thing on the table to mark it, it's not like you're stuck in a corner in the back of the room so that you're all by yourself. It's not isolating the person, the people, it's just making sure that you get the absolute best care and service and respect that you can get when you're going to a restaurant. It gives them the opportunity to go back out and enjoy what they love to do. And I think that's very, very important because I've had a very, very upsetting incident with my dad because of his Alzheimer's at a restaurant and it was extremely hurtful. So, I think that, you know, restaurants doing something like this in our town is just going to be one more, you know, thumbs up for them for doing.
Anything else from the board? Mike?
Could I make a motion that we sign the pledge?
Sure.
Is this a good time?
Hey, it's fine with me.
Now, are you, you collecting all these pledges or?
It's just one pledge. And you guys, I'll sign it. Actually, it's for you to sign as well Ted, so all of you get to sign it. And then, I'll make a copy of it, I will give you a copy of it, actually you can have the original if you'd like. And we'll just keep it on file and it's just whenever, you know, if there's anything ever said about what we're doing, I can show that my select board and my town administrator are behind this all the way.
Can I read the pledge so people at home know what we're signing?
Absolutely.
Sure.
As members of Sturbridge's Dementia Friendly Action Team, we pledge to continue to engage these efforts by taking action to improve our community and system capabilities thereby optimizing the health, well-being and involvement of people with dementia and their care partners. We agree that every part of our community plays a role and that together we can work to take steps to create a dementia friendly culture and facilities that facilitate the adoption of dementia friendly practices in all parts of Sturbridge. Whereas, we have consulted with the Dementia Friendly Massachusetts Project Manager, Gail.
Patty.
Oh Patty, I'm sorry. Wrong name, right person. And we also, number two, we've created an action team and identified a team leader, Heather.
And I've put, and we have a task force, people signing up.
And a task force.
Yep.
And number three, we've engaged three or more community sectors, which Heather said we had sixteen sectors or something.
It's sixteen people, but we definitely more than three sectors because we have locals.
And finally, we've created an action plan that includes involvement of. And finally, we've created an action plan that includes involvement of persons living with dementia, which is this here. We now hereby sign this, this pledge and sign our commitment to continue in our efforts to make and sustain Sturbridge as a dementia-friendly community.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of signing? Okay, now, Heather, you actually have one where it's all filled in.
Yep, free to sign.
That's the one we should sign?
Yeah. Thank you very much for doing this.
But then, you can go first.
Also, Heather, on your rough draft, when you fix it up, um, the departments, it's just recreation. We don't have a POCs in recreation, okay? Just, uh, people sometimes get upset when they...
And the whole thing with, with this is, this will be, you know, we'll work with the town to make sure that, you know, there, there could be things in here that, that I think we could do, that it may not even be in our bylaws to do, or, or whatever. So, working with you guys to make sure that we, the things that we can do, and then working with all the sectors, um, to get it accomplished.
You know, it seems like with Alzheimer's, twenty years ago, you never heard about it as, as much as you do now. Now, I know, like, so many, well, not so many, but certainly a handful of parents of my friends and different, is it because it was just not diagnosed and, and we called it senility, or just didn't, um...
Yep. And people are living longer.
Yeah.
People are living longer, and they're living healthier longer, so, you know, they, what they say, that eighties are the, the seventies are the new fifties, and...
Fifties are the new thirties? That's what I like to hear.
Yeah, so, people are living longer, so it's showing up more, and people are becoming more educated, more aware, doctors are more, are, are educated, so it's being diagnosed.
It's also important to remember that this is a disease now.
Right.
And before, people just thought, "Oh, you're getting old."
Yeah.
But getting, you don't get dementia just because you get old.
Correct.
You've, you've gotta have that diagnosis. So, also, we're allowed to talk about it now. It's okay to say that my mom has dementia and not be embarrassed by it, and I, and also, people, uh, communities are more welcoming to, to people with different kinds of disabilities, where they're just out in, out of the shadows now, so... But truly, everybody knows somebody. I never go give a presentation anywhere in the state, or any other place I've been, where almost everybody in the room didn't have a direct experience.
Yeah. And without even realizing this, even though we're focused on dementia, the training that people are going to get, um, is not only gonna help them with just dementia, it's going to help them when they're dealing with people who are living with dementia, Alzheimer's, PTSD, autism, uh, vision impairment, hearing impairment. They're going to have more sensitivity training, and working with all of these people is just gonna be a natural reaction. It's gonna be like a domino effect, it's, it's just gonna happen. So, we're opening the door for more than just dementia, which is just a little added plus in my book.
And Ted's gonna sign it?
I'm just letting you guys send it back and forth.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Do you all get to vote?
Yes.
Okay.
I think we voted.
Yes.
I'm sure we did.
So, do you have any other questions for me?
The rest can remember whether we voted or not.
We did. What I'm amazed by is that you didn't ask about, "How much does this cost?" Well, that's a question that's, that's the first question that selectmen normally ask me, is how much does this cost?
No, I, that would've been brought up if, you know...
I, well, I think at the meeting, I think at the meeting too, last week, we did say that this is free, there is no charge.
Charge for all of this stuff.
Nope. So, that's, that's an even bigger...
If there are charges later, they'll, they'll come up then.
Right now, there, there aren't any.
Yep. And that's what we, that's what we're looking at right now, yeah.
Any charges are subject to appropriation.
That's right.
That never changes.
So, the next step will be, I will be getting together with Patty, and her and I are gonna do some talking about what I need to do next, and then I will be reaching out to the select board, let you know what I need to, what we need to do next, and we'll go from there.
Okay. Well, thank you both for coming in, and Heather, thank you for all your work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
You guys are fortunate to have such an energetic and dedicated director.
Youth will do that.
So, where's the original one that you all signed?
Um, Shanae made a copy.
They're gonna have a copy.
As I say, youth. Okay, next on the agenda, we have old business. Priscilla, any old?
Uh, no, no.
Case, Mike?
No.
Okay. Mary?
So, I'm all set?
Yes. So, the only old business I have is, you know, we signed the Declaration of Friendship for Stowbridge, and we had received theirs, and it says, "The Rotary Club of Stowbridge to Chairman Mary Blanchard and members of the Sturbridge Board of Selectmen, President Austin Jenkins, and members of the Rotary Club of Sturbridge, Massachusetts. On this annual civic day, it is with great pleasure that we join together to send special greetings to you all to mark the anniversary of Stowbridge Rotary Friendship Day, which has now existed for over a quarter of a century." Actually, thirty years. "A true indication of the strength of the bond of friendship between us. Although so much of the world is subject to difficult and turbulent times, this occasion affords us the opportunity to issue health, happiness, and prosperity for the coming year, and to express our hope that through Rotary, we can further our aims to spread and promote peace, friendship, and understanding between all the peoples of the world." And it's signed Andrew Scudmore, President Rotary Club of Stowbridge, and Alan Taylor, Mayor of Metropolitan Borough of Dudley. And I do wanna thank Mike, I was unable to attend, but Klaus Hochfeld from the Rotary Club every year Skypes the Rotary Club in Stowbridge at their lunchtime, which is early here. So, Mike was able to attend, and, uh, it went well.
It was, it went well, and it was a great experience, and Klaus was, uh, very nervous that something would go wrong, but everything went right.
Yeah, well, it has in the past. Dropped mics and...
Dropped the mic.
Yeah. Okay, Mary, did you have any old business?
No.
New business, Priscilla?
No.
No, no.
Case, Mike?
Uh, no, um, well, yes, I just wanted to, to let, uh, let the board know that I'll be attending, uh, um, a Public Works, uh, uh, meeting on, uh, on Thursday, uh, that was sponsored, sponsored by CMR PC, and, uh, it's, it's trying to get, uh, explore how Public Works, uh, can work together in, in the region, so, I'll, at our next meeting, maybe I'll be able to, uh, give you some more information about that under old business.
Okay, sounds good. Mary, any new?
No.
And I have old new. So, we did correspondence, so, Shanae, you have the original that Mike brought you, didn't you? All my ink. Um, we have minutes then. We have the minutes of October 17th, 2016.
Is this the end of the sixteens?
I hope so.
Are we done now?
They are, all, all the sixteens are done.
We're finally caught up?
Yeah.
Wow.
Very good. Pressed.
I got, uh, a couple of comments on that, on page two. Um, uh, the second paragraph down, where it says, "Increasing the water and sewer rate." I think it should say, "Increasing the septage rate to six cents per gallon," cause that's how much is charged for, for septage, not water and sewer.
Not water and sewer.
And, this is October 17th, right?
Right.
Uh, on page three, uh, under old business, there was a vote, uh, for a draft policy on social media, and the vote was three to zero. I'm wondering if that was four to zero, cause the next vote was four to zero.
Who's gonna remember that?
Yeah, I don't know.
But it does make sense. I know I didn't vote against it. Mary, you didn't vote against it? Priscilla, you don't remember?
I'm the one that made it.
I know, so...
I don't remember...
Yeah, I mean, no one would be against social media.
Yeah, so, just change it to four to...
Yeah, I, I, my recollection would be that the vote would've been unanimous.
All the other votes are...
That's a good catch, Mike.
Okay, anything else?
Yeah, um, page, uh, on the second page, the paragraph with Philcheck, um, one, two, three, four lines from the bottom. Businesses not in the study area, I...
Were.
Were, yeah, should be were, sent a letter.
Were, not were. Okay, anything else?
That's it.
Okay, anybody wanna make a motion to approve as amended?
So moved.
Is there a second? Any discussion? All in favor? Four and one abstention. Okay, then we have the minutes of November 21st, 2016.
I have a sentence to add. Um, on page four, M. Dowling stated that the health agent, et cetera, was to occur. It would be hard to bring it back to full-time. Uh, can you also add, "The health agent also has qualific, qualifications and credentials that administrative staff does not possess." Cause that was a big reason why we didn't wanna cut the health agent to a part-time position.
Has qualifications and credentials that...
Administrative staff does not have or does not possess.
Okay, anything else? Okay, motion to approve is amended?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor? Okay, four and one abstention.
Mary and I, that's it on this next one.
Yeah, I know. Let's not disagree.
Yeah.
Okay, um, December 19th, 2016.
I don't have anything.
No, I didn't either. Do you have a motion then, Priscilla?
Make a motion to approve the minutes of, uh, December 19, 2016.
I'll second it. Any discussion, Priscilla?
No, none.
All in favor? Two. Three abstentions.
Three abstentions.
Yeah, and three abstentions, yeah.
So, wait, so what was the vote? So, we vote, I voted, right?
You and I have to vote, yeah.
Oh, okay.
We're the only two that can.
Got it.
They can.
Wait, it's Mary, it's myself, and...
And me. There's three people. Craig Moran was the other one, he's not here anymore. So, Mary and I are the only two who can approve those.
But it's approved by necessity.
Well, it's still a quorum of three. Out of three, it's a quorum.
Yeah.
Okay, September's...
Got it.
September 17th, 2018.
We're out here.
Yeah, I have a couple. Um, on page three, the senior center study, um, M. Blanchard asked if they were, rather than they're were, I think, they were requesting. See on page three? Senior study?
Yeah, what line? Oh, okay, I see.
See, it was says, "Asked if they were requesting." Um, the other one is on page four, and my notes show that the motion to place and support warrant Article 35. Um, wait a second, is that the one that I looked at? My understanding at that time, it was just a placeholder, not a support. I think we did that tonight.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, that's what I show in my notes, I'm just asking the question pretty much.
I think you're right.
It was, it, cause I, I have here a note that it was a placeholder until we had numbers.
You're talking about 35?
Thirty-five, yeah.
Yeah, and it said that, I say it, um, it's a placeholder in case they decide to use one of the search terms.
Right, it's a placeholder.
So, I think we just placed it.
Placed it, right. And we placed and supported it tonight, but we just placed it that time, as, as, that's what I'm showing.
That would make sense.
Makes sense? Um, the other one that I have also is underneath that, um, said PJMS asked what, I would say, cross out the what, and asked for more detail?
Oh.
See it?
Yeah. First line.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Then also, on Article 36, um, according to my notes, I did not vote for that. That is not, it was not unanimous. Uh, to place and support warrant Article 36, I did not vote in favor of it at that time.
That may have just been up to...
It was for pla, yeah, for placing, if we placed it, I voted for it, but not to support it.
Yeah, I think, was that, 36 was...
Thirty-six.
Salary, we didn't have an amount, so it must've been...
Might've been just placing again.
I think it was, just to place at that time.
Placing I supported, but I did not support it.
Well, you're right, I think it should read to place, not...
Just to place, right?
Cause they were supporting it tonight.
Yeah, I got confused by all the wording.
We didn't, we didn't have, yeah, we didn't have, we didn't have an amount that night.
Right, so it's just to place again.
Okay. So, 35 and 36 are to place?
Yeah, I think so. Mary, what do you have? Mary, be, did you place, pla?
I buried it.
Okay.
I can watch the video again, cause I did watch the video trying to...